Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council for Tuesday, September 3rd. Also included today will be the Library Board, Housing Authority Board, Community Service District, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. So at this time, would you like to call Rolbes?
Yes. Councilmember Heinz.
Present.
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Councilmember Weil.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich. Mayor Kite.
Thank you. And would you all please stand and join Councilman Weil in his pledge to the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we have a special presentation. The individual is John Hicks. He's in charge of construction for Kam Sang, which is the company doing the development of the Ritz Hotel up behind us. Kam Sang is the managing member of the New Age Rancho Mirage, which is the owner of the property, and the Ritz Carlton is the operator. At our last meeting on July 18th, the City Council requested that Kam Sang provide monthly updates on the status of the construction. The meetings will be here on the first council meeting of the month, and we'll provide time for questions from the audience. So, John, would you like to come forward? Really appreciate you being here today. Appreciate the tour. You took me on last week, and I'm really impressed with the amount of work that's been accomplished over the last six weeks. So, go ahead with your presentation.
Wonderful. Mayor, thank you very much. Members of council, thank you for seeing me today. As discussed previously, I think a majority of our discussion actually evolved around some of the challenges that were incurred once we actually took over the site. Well, today I'd like to report that all the findings that we had and the unforeseen conditions that occurred on the site, it looks like are well past us. As a note, I actually brought a few photographs that we'll discuss as we go through the presentation. As an example, this first photograph that we're looking at is actually of the entry experiences we've walked into the lobby. The paper that you're looking at is actually protection for the travertine that was recently installed over the last couple of weeks. Now that we're starting to get the materials in this site, a lot of our materials had long lead items, as you can imagine. All of the wood has been completed. You could see actually a hint of the lighting that has been installed. And the last thing that we have to complete, actually in the space as far as the floor is concerned, is actually a reference to the wood floor. There's a small black walnut floor that'll be installed as a feature to the flooring, and then an area rug on top of that. So as we progress to the next slide, just a different angle of the main lobby. The lobby desk that you're looking at back there, the last thing that we have to install, we've already terminated all the points of connection for low voltage. And what's left is a alabaster, a natural alabaster stone that should be going in within the next, well, the next time I'm up here, we should have the alabaster hung on the front of the reception desk. Next slide. Just a second direction or third direction of the lobby. Keep on going. What you're looking at here, actually this is a pretty poor shot, that's mostly my fault, is actually the restaurant, public restrooms. We have actually completed all of the stone within this bathroom. And actually, what you're going to be looking at here is your experience as you enter the public restrooms themselves. All floor-to-ceiling wood paneling that matches the rest of the spaces throughout the hotel. Wood vanity with travertine or natural stone countertops, full-height mirrors, some glass tile will be going in after that. So now we're just starting to prep it to get the rest of the finishes in. Probably looking at within about another 30 to 45 days for restrooms complete. Doors, we have some solid alder doors that were ordered for the restroom. Those just came in pre-prepped, and the millwork company will start hanging those with the casing that just came in. Alder as well. So, next. Same thing, next. That just gives you a shot, just looking directly at the vanity, and then the door back into the restaurant area, next. What you're looking at here is actually our junior ballroom. All the millwork, I think for those of you who've already been on-site, you've probably seen this room. This is actually the junior ballroom. The last component to be installed in this space now is actually just flooring and wall fabric. It is currently moved into the garage, and wall fabric will be starting in the next roughly three weeks. We'll start the wallpaper company hanging this fabric, as well as other fabrics that have to be hung through. The restrooms in the guest suites, looking to complete those. Those are actually tracking out to complete somewhere around. The junior ballroom and restrooms for Wing A, B, and C are tracking out to complete right around end of October would be our last couple of restrooms while we're moving in furniture. Currently, just to talk about the guest rooms briefly, we started on Wing B. That's where we actually started the project. We are actually going through the process now of starting to spray in the final coats of paint for the floors and ceilings. Everything is being redone now that the shafts have been completed. So we've roughly completed about close to 40 shafts now, which equates to about the entire Wing B. So now those are being closed up. We have first layer, second layer, and third layer is complete. So now we're actually getting ready to finish out those rooms. Some of the rooms now, if you come up in the next couple of weeks, you'll see they're actually being cleaned out for furniture. You can go to the next slide. What you're looking at here is actually was completed last week, started last week, completed last week. Just to the side of the junior ballroom is actually, I got a couple of shots, so you can go to the next slide, is actually our pre-function space. It is a small space off to the side, had been incomplete for quite a while. Well, now you see, we've actually brought the walls up to a level-five drywall finish and have completed all the millwork in that room. This room is now ready for floor finishes and final wall treatments. There's some specialty wall treatments that'll go on it. So it's ready for its final dressing. Next. Although the shot is a little dark, this is actually what we refer to as the Three Meal Restaurant. It's the main restaurant that is actually inside the boundaries of the hotel. We have completed all the wood installation for the ceilings. And what you're looking at is they've already drilled the panels and have actually started in the rough electrical on the backside of the panels. Next will be trim. That should occur in the next couple of weeks. And the audiovisual team has actually started in the project about two weeks ago, roughly, pulling all the cables for a music system that'll be throughout the entire property. They've also prepped this room as well. So now we're looking at finishing this room out, getting some of the specialty stones on the wall now. All the stone, the first layer of stone has been placed. We have some alabaster to be hung. We're going to be hanging that. If you go to the next slide, off in the distance there, sitting actually against my storefront, is the millwork that is intended for the private dining experience that you see just behind the scissor lift. And we're looking at that going in, starting next week. And now that'll start dressing that place up. We have already ordered drapes for the space, as well as the guest rooms. Drapes are currently being fabricated, ready to be installed in about the next five weeks. And by that point, this room will be completely completed. Next slide. To the exterior, I just did a little bit of a close-up. This is a outdoor bar and lounge area where you can come out and sit during a nice spring day. A little warm today, but we actually have that stuccoed. It is ready to receive its final granite finish. And then the millwork, some of the stainless steel that'll be going in there, we've already ordered that from the specialty company. That's three weeks out from completion. So in about three to four weeks, that bar will be completed. Next. The next few shots, if you just expand through the next three slowly, what you're looking at is as you walk out of the main hotel through the Three Meal Restaurant, you come upon the terrace deck. As you look out to the terrace deck, you've got this beautiful view that actually spans across the valley. And the contractors have now completed 99% of the infrastructure that had to go in. That includes all low voltage, high voltage, landscape lighting, various transformer locations for events. The irrigation system needed to be completed throughout this entire area. It has now been set up for finished grade. The first slide you saw was actually set up for synthetic turf off to the left-hand side there. As you go through the center, we have a concrete pore that is scheduled. That's actually our, it's a zero-edge water feature, a reflection pond. And we're actually looking at completing that concrete pore this week. And once they complete that, they'll start working their way out around the edge restaurant and then back out through the front of the property. Next slide.
John, it looks like you've replaced some of the palm trees as well.
We've actually replaced a significant amount of them. This is one of the crazy things. You know, the palm trees looked green, but if they have less than six branches and haven't grown in six months, what we had was we actually grabbed a couple and it compressed the trunks, so we had to take them out and replace them. There's not enough water. So, next slide. This is just looking at across the terrace deck, the actually hole back at the restaurant. This used to be opened up in several locations. You had exposed studs, exposed structure. We've completely covered that up now. The eaves, soffits have been completed, and the building has now been painted to the back off of that terrace deck. Next slide. Just another shot, what I'm showing there or trying to represent there is the trellis work. If you remember, when we first came out here, we had to remove every single bit of trellis work that was out there. It had been subjected to environmental, a significant amount of environmental damage just from not being painted. The wood had completely rotted out. So we've actually completed the trellis install along Wing A, Wing B. And then if we go to the next slide, that's just looking back towards the additional landscape that's installed. Next. Again, the same thing, basically what you look at in the shadows there is the balance of the medium height and ground cover that the landscapers have just started. Now we're to the, this is over in the, where the residential pool is located. This is Wing A. Trellis work has been completed, and the misting system is about 80% complete now. Next. Now we're just looking over at the landscape. We had some cactuses that now are starting to be planted over the slope by the residential pool area. Additional landscaping, the two, the towel, the building for towel racks or towel distribution and the toilet bedroom, that's completely stuccoed now. Roofs are complete, and it's sitting there awaiting final paint. Next. You can go to the next one. Okay, what we're looking at is the first corner as it goes over the side of the cliff of the spa suites. I think the last time we were here, the building had not been painted. We had some miscellaneous stone that was to be completed. Now we've actually, or actually I should say, the contractor has completed all of the stonework on the exterior. Guardrails are being detailed and painted. They're doing actually second and third coats on the guardrails. Storefront is completely installed, and you are looking at the building color as stipulated within the construction documents. And then the next slides are just showing more of the building. And that is the spa suites building. You can keep going. This is actually the transition between the spa, spa suites. It acts as a breezeway for the residential entrance, the residential component of the entrance. We've actually put in an integral color stucco that has been completed, and they are actually starting from the fascia and eve, working their way down to the ground. That building, this will be completely painted by week's end as well. Next. Next. This, as we come back around to the front, the lobby area, we just received a rather large shipment of plants today. This is actually the, in attempt to complete. So this, when we open the hotel, we want the landscape to look mature. Usually we start this four months before opening. So now what we're getting ready to do is plant all the front entry, literally from the entrance of the hotel, I mean down on Sinatra, coming back through all the way to the front door. So these are some of the materials that were specified on the landscape plan. Next slide. Next slide. And you can see, now the entrance, the big difference here is now nobody will be walking over piles of dirt, boards. The tile company is just about complete. They're 90% complete with the travertine and then the truncated domes that need to be installed at the front of the hotel. And they've actually, actually over 90% complete with that stone. Takes a little more time because we have to color match, so that we don't get too many darts in one location. With that, that pretty much catches you up. I didn't want to bother, next week what I'll do is I'll start focusing on guest, I mean next month, start focusing on guest rooms once the wall coverings are in.
Thanks, John. Any questions from council?
I'll just make this comment, John, that last week I had the opportunity to tour the project with Mayor Protem Smotrich. And what I find interesting is the high standards that the Ritz requires. And we keep forgetting about that because I saw the crown molding that you had to take down to replace with new crown molding. When I looked at it, I said, why would you take that down? It's absolutely perfect. And of course, it was described to me that that didn't meet the standards of the Ritz. So I think that when we talk about certain delays, we have to take into consideration these, the criteria. And in the end run, we're going to have just a very magnificent five-star facility.
Yeah, I think the, thank you for noticing that. Yeah, the team and Ritz Carlton, you know, we as a developer actually asked Ritz Carlton to come out. I think they've been on-site a total of two months. They have their own set of project management teams, and so we walk the building on a daily basis. So, thank you very much.
Scott.
John, do you think you're on track for the December 25th opening or prior?
I leave that up to Ritz Carlton. You know, I mean, just like Councilmember mentioned, Ritz Carlton, unlike some of the other brands that, you know, we could have at one point selected, staying with the Ritz was by choice for us as a developer, and we have an understanding for what they're looking at. I will be presenting a schedule within the next, within our next meeting that'll show you where Ritz Carlton is. We actually have to interlace the Ritz Carlton with our construction schedule. They have a pretty laborious, I think the general manager has actually made a presentation that we selected for the Ritz Carlton. He was an executive Ritz Carlton, and they have a 3,000-item checklist that they go through. And so we are anticipating how they're going to lace into our schedule right now. So now we've established a date of completion for construction that we have a hard commitment as to when we're going to be turning over spaces. And now it's for them to get their staff trained. I'm not really at liberty to discuss that schedule. I don't have the proper information to discuss the actual opening date. That will be determined by Ritz. However, we do not anticipate that we'll be going over the dates that we discussed previous, previous month.
Scott, do you have any further? Dana, any questions? No, good work. Iris.
First of all, I wanted to thank you so much for coming today. It's such a pleasure to have you up here and to have you bring us up to date on what's been happening. It was very impressive, once again, to be up there last week. And I know there was a lot of concern from the people that spoke at our last meeting in regard to why there aren't more people up there working. And I believe that this will satisfy a lot of their concerns, hopefully, but also for the people who are familiar with construction. We all know that you don't bring in the painters before you do the drywall, and you don't put up the drywall before you do the wiring. So everything happens step by step, and I think that you have become so conscientious in the product you're trying to put forth to the residents of Rancho Mirage and the entire Coachella Valley that it's going to be a thrilling experience, and I thank you again for all your hard work and for coming to speak with us.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who has a question regarding the construction? I'm sure John would like to answer for you. Okay, John, it looks like you survived this month, so you come back again next month.
I will see you next month. Thank you very much again.
Thanks for all your time and effort.
Good day.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to non-agenda public comments, and these are items that are in general in nature, not included on the agenda. And you're more than welcome to come up and speak on any of those items for three minutes. I'd like to start by introducing Ted Weil, one of our council members, who has a special guest here today who we'd like to introduce. Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allison, if you'd be kind enough to join me, I'm going to introduce Allison Meyer-Sachs. Allison is the Director of Community Outreach and Cancer Support Services for the Eisenhower Lucy Kersey Cancer Center. They have a prostate cancer symposium starting September 12th. I have a particular interest in this because I am a prostate cancer survivor, and so when I saw the symposium, it had particular significance for me. And I feel that it's something extremely important that we want to bring to the attention of our residents. I think that the health and welfare area is one that we will concentrate on in the future. And I also want to thank Elizabeth Wallingham, who is Vice President of Marketing and Public Relations at Eisenhower Medical Center for making this possible. With that, Allison, if you would, and by the way, Allison has a handout here that the city clerk has for anybody that would like information about it. So if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you our seventh annual National Prostate Cancer Symposium. Eisenhower Lucy Kersey Cancer Center has a tagline that means a lot to those of us who are cancer survivors, those of us who work in cancer, and for our community as well. And we like to identify ourselves as a healing place like no other. We think that's very important. And our commitment to patient education and community outreach and community health and wellness means just that, a healing place like no other. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we have planned for the month of September. September is National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. It's a time when we try our best across this country to bring information and services for the prevention, detection, and treatment options for prostate cancer patients, their family and loved ones. So in honor of that month, I want to share with you a little bit, it's not really a little bit, it's a lot actually, we're very proud of it, of what we're doing at Eisenhower Lucy Kersey Cancer Center. Starting on Thursday, September 12th, we have a Nutrition and Prostate Cancer Lecture entitled Eating Well for Health. The marriage of healthy eating and nutrition and lowering the statistical risk of developing cancers such as prostate is a huge new area and field with tremendous research in it. So we invite you to join us at 5:00 for a lecture from Carolyn Katzen, Certified Nutrition Specialist, as she presents How Do We Eat Well for Health? On Monday, September 16th, we'll have a specific lecture on the radiation therapy for prostate cancer, understanding your treatment options. The advances in radiation treatment and the specific pinpointing of radiation beams that target just the cancer and not healthy tissue is an extraordinary advancement in cancer treatment. And we invite you to listen to Dr. Robert Johnson for that very excellent lecture at noon. On Tuesday, September 17th, out at Eisenhower's Arduous Health Center in La Quinta, we will be presenting an overview of prostate cancer, present treatments, and future options. Prostate cancer is leading the way in this country in research and innovative treatments. And we're very excited to have a medical oncologist, Dr. Henry Tsai, expert in research and explanations of what's new and exciting, to join us. And that will be at 5:00 on the 17th. We have prostate cancer, how to protect your bones. Cancer tends to move to one place first, regardless of the cancer. For prostate cancer, it tends to migrate, if it's going to move at all, into men's bones first. So it's really important for prostate cancer patients to understand how do they protect their bones? What do they do? Also, certain treatment options that we offer men in prostate cancer lend to, lend themselves to bones being affected softened somewhat. So we want them to be sure to know what to do, how to exercise safely and properly. So on Wednesday, September 18th, at 5:30, please join Dr. Richard Fossil as he talks about how to protect your bones. Last two, on Thursday, September 19th, Dr. Lance Walsh, urologist and expert in the diagnosis and treatment of early-stage prostate cancer, will talk to us about the newest treatment on localized, that means early-stage prostate cancer. Lastly, on Monday, September 30th, Medical Oncologist Dr. Varun Gupta will present information for us on treatment of advanced-stage prostate cancer. 10 years ago, if you were told you had a diagnosis of prostate cancer and it was advanced stage, stage three or four, there were no treatments for you. We had first-line treatments, that was it. We tried to make you as comfortable as possible, and we kept our fingers crossed that that cancer didn't move any further than it already had because stage three and four means the prostate cancer has already escaped the prostate bed. This is no longer the case, and that's very exciting. Again, as I mentioned before, the advances in treatment. So Dr. Gupta will go over what we have now for advanced-stage prostate cancer, treatment lines one, two, three, four, even five. That means we have lots of treatment for men who have advanced-stage prostate cancer and help them live long and healthy lives with that cancer. A lot going on. Almost everything we do comes with lunch or dinner. We know when you join us and you join us in our house, the least we can do is feed you. I think that's a welcoming thing to do, break bread together as we learn together. And I'm here for any questions or information you might need specifically about prostate cancer or cancer in general, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, Allison. Is there any questions?
The wonderful thing today is that there are alternatives. The fact that you're diagnosed does not necessarily mean that in any way that it's fatal. It's only the beginning of a cure. So thank you very much for coming over.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue on with the non-agenda public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on any item that's not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move on to city council comments. Iris, would you like to begin comments?
Sure. As always, I always try to bring you some information about the library and the happenings that are taking place there. And now there are, even though we haven't started the official season again, there's a number of exciting things that are happening. So mark on your calendar, September 26th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., there's going to be a presentation by the singer-songwriter Bobby Joe Valentine. And he's been there a few times in the past, always well-received. He brings warmth with his guitar and his ukulele, and if you attend, you're in for another unforgettable evening. And bringing back the Vamps and Vixens is always a popular group of movies. It features this time Joan Blondell, Quada Colbert, and Marlena Dietrich, held on September 16th, 23rd, and 30th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And those are for all the people that enjoy the fine old-time presentations of the Vamps and Vixens. And as always, David Bryan is in our audience, and I wanted to thank him personally for all the work he does with his co-partner Susan Cook, who is our senior librarian. They bring us wonderful events and wonderful happenings. There's something else I wanted to mention very quickly because even though it's really the dog days of summer that are soon to be over, there's still lots of things that people in Rancho Mirage should know, and especially for the visitors who are going to be coming here. We have many locations here that are dog-friendly, including several restaurants and hotels. Check them out on our website or on the websites of the different hotels located in Rancho Mirage. There's also lots of areas of shopping and walking for your dogs, and don't hesitate to bring them along on a leash. But there are certain things to be aware of, one of which is called doggy etiquette. And if you're not aware of it and you're planning to get a dog, it's something you might want to brush up on. When you go to these places, especially an outdoor restaurant, you want your dog to be well-mannered, and you want him to make sure that he understands the basic commands. You also want to make sure that your pet is going to be seated under the table and away from the waiting staff. We don't want your little ones to get stepped on by anybody walking around with trays or trying to maneuver around with food. trying to maneuver around with food. And you also want to make sure that you bring some supplies for your little pet, whether it's in the way of treats or water, and most of all, you want to bring a little bit of something for cleanup if there's an accident. I think the most important thing that we can do for our pets, though, is their safety. People don't think about a lot of things. One of the most important, of course, and we see it all the time, is people with their pets in the front seat. It's a very dangerous place for your pet to be. You really want to make sure that they're in the backseat and that they are secured in the backseat. One of the most important parts of dog safety, or animal safety in general, is that you never, ever, ever want to leave your dog in the car by himself. It's a very important thing to know that the outside temperature, even if it's at 80 degrees, the inside temperature of your car will rise to 99 degrees within 10 minutes. It's very frightening when you think about it, and people say, "Well, I'm just going to run in for this or that." Before you know it, the heat has risen and your animal will be in danger. So please be aware of that. So what I wanted to end with is just be careful, be considerate of your pet, but also be considerate of others. Thank you.
Not today, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No puppies today.
No puppies today. They didn't catch the change in our schedule.
All right. Ted, do you have any comments?
Tomorrow at 5:00 is the beginning of the Jewish New Year called Rosh Hashanah, and I merely want to extend a happy and healthy New Year to all of our residents and visitors and wish you nothing but the best for you and your family for the coming year.
Thank you, Ted. Scott?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Today's a pretty exciting day for all the residents of Rancho Mirage. We opened our new high school today. It's the first new school to be built in Rancho Mirage, a public school in a long time since Rancho Mirage Elementary was built way back. So today, the school opens with about 900 students, freshmen and sophomores. With the construction being finished, the total capacity will be 2,300 students within the next couple of years. Over 300,000 square feet of school buildings, eight buildings and 88 classrooms are over 60 acres of land. The school is located on the corner of Ramon and Deval, east of Tuscany. Two of the features in the school that really are exciting and have a lot of people interested in the new school are the new Performing Arts Center, which will be second to none in the valley, and also the new Culinary Center, which will provide workers for the hospitality and tourism industry. So if you haven't been out to the new site, go out, take a look, go in and say hello to the principal, Ken Wagner, he'd be more than happy to take you on a tour of the campus. And this Thursday, day after tomorrow, they play their first football game. Because they don't have juniors or seniors, they'll be playing junior varsity this year, but if you'd like, get out there at 5:00 on Thursday and root on the Rattlers. So look forward to a great deal of help with the city, with the high school and what they're doing. We're going to work very closely with them, and we're really excited about it, hope they are too, and in two years, they'll have their first graduating class. So get out and root the Rattlers on. Go Rattlers. Okay, we'll now move on to the minutes from the July 18th meeting.
Will they be approved?
There's a motion in a second, please vote. And the motion carries with three yes and two abstentions, is that correct, Beth?
Wait a second, let's double check this.
That's what it looks like, okay.
At the roll call, everybody was present.
Yeah. Okay, how about we just do this by voice vote? Iris?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Dana?
Aye.
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye, so minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, and the consent calendar contains items that are routine in nature and may be approved by one blanket motion upon unanimous consent. Any member of the city council or the public may request a consent item to be discussed and polled at this time. So is there any items on the consent calendar that you would like polled? Okay, we'll now move on with the city manager talking about the specific items. Randy Binder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. If I could just take a moment, Mr. Mayor, to talk about the American Cancer Society Relay for Life real quickly. The Relay for Life fundraiser was held about two months ago at the Palm Valley School Gymnasium. City of Rancho Mirage fielded a relay team. The Relay for Life was organized by Eisenhower Medical Center Lucy Kersey, and we were recently honored as the team that raised the second-most amount of money. Their goal was 20,000. They actually raised 28,000, and the city team raised 3,200 of that 28,000. So the captain, our captain, was Sandra Johnson. The co-captain was Letty Gallegos Gallardo from the city, and then the relay team was Melissa Brooks, Steve Buchanan, myself, Michael Dowry, Brian Gethardt, Kim Malcolm Valente, Cindy Stoddard, and Britt Wilson. So thank you very much, and this will go in our case in the lobby.
Hey, congratulations. This is not the first plaque from Relay for Life either. I know they've been very successful in the past.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's a short consent calendar today, four items. Item number one on your consent calendar is final acceptance for city project 9-249. It's a city project installed the street and traffic signal improvements on Ramon Road and Rattler Road. You'll remember that the city was awarded a $900,000 grant from Caltrans for the Safe Routes to School program. The Palm Springs Unified School District matched it with $100,000, and the improvements were installed by granite construction under the school's supervision, the streets and sidewalk improvements on the north side of Ramon, about a half a mile, and then the full width of Rattler Road, as well as the signalized intersection of Rattler and Ramon Road. And also, as a reminder, 30th Avenue north of the school has also been installed from Rattler over to Deval Drive and is functional today. So that is, city council would accept the public improvements and authorize staff to file a notice of acceptance with the county recorder's office. Item number two on your consent calendar was prepared at the behest of council member Dana Hobart. This is a request to adopt a resolution to formally memorialize the city's practice of issuing mayoral proclamations. Since 1973, the city of Rancho Mirage has elected the council in the context of nonpartisan elections, and this resolution would formalize, memorialize, the process that we use for the mayor issuing proclamations. I can go into more detail if you'd like on that. Item number three is approval of the contracts and purchase orders, and item number four on your consent calendar are demands, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Are there any comments or questions on the consent calendar?
The only comment I would make is I think that what might be added to what Randy said with respect to the policy for mayoral proclamations is that it is not city policy, it is city policy to not issue proclamations on matters that are of social significance, mainly on a state or national level, over which the city does not have any jurisdiction or right of approval or disapproval.
Thank you, Dana. Can I have a motion, please, on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, vote, please. If you're not in favor, you don't have to vote. And, okay, 5-0, the motion carries. We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of the council meeting. Item number five is the consideration of approval for the installation of a 68-foot-tall monopalm telecommunications tower located behind Rancho Mirage Country Club at 38005 Vista del Sol. Randy, who's going to cover this?
Randy, before you do that, tell me, we just got this letter submitted by AT&amp;T asking to take the matter off calendar or to waive a certain condition that they don't like.
Right, and it's not really clear, are they asking for continuance, or do they want the item heard and then see what happens with the conditions and then ask for it to be continued then?
Says they request either a continuance or approval to waive condition number 11, and I don't know that we should take the time to go through this if they're telling us that they're not even going to maintain the property around where they want to plant a fake tree.
It looks to me like you should probably go ahead and continue it to October 3rd, but because it is a hearing item, I think you need to open the hearing on the aspect of the continuance, and then close it, and then continue to the October 3rd meeting. I think Bud mentioned that they wanted more time to digest the information in the staff report, is that right?
Well, they say they're not, quote, "AT&amp;T is currently not prepared to accept those conditions." So in particular, condition number 11, having to do with maintaining the area around their fake tree.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe we have to go through this whole process in order to...
Well, I don't think that staff would be in favor of recommending deletion of that condition.
Well, yeah, nor do I think the city council would.
Sorry, but I hate to put you on the spot, but are they, are they, what's the value in a continuance? Are they going to think about this more, or will they be asking for that condition to be removed? If they're asking for it to be removed, then you might as well hear it today since it was noticed.
They...
Take public testimony and have council give your opinions.
This item was noticed as a public hearing. After we noticed it, the applicant did submit a letter asking for the item to be continued to the October 3rd meeting. They don't like some of the conditions that staff recommended, including, and they needed a little bit more time to maybe understand them, maybe meet with staff to work with us. They did attend the planning commission meeting and asked the planning commission to remove certain conditions, and the planning commission agreed with staff that they should remain in the recommendation that moves forward to the city council. So I believe that's why they want the continuance, just to understand these...
Do they have a representative here?
Yes, they do.
Oh, good.
Bud, while you're there, in reading this, there seemed to be some question as to the AT&amp;T asking the CVWD to take care of some of the items that are required, and it's not clear where that stands, whether there's been some resolution between CVWD. Have they agreed to take care of some of the maintenance? Where does that fall now? Is there still dialogue going on between the two?
Sure. CVWD, as you may know, is owner of the property, and of course, the owner of a property is always ultimately responsible for the maintenance of their property. It's our understanding that the cell company provider has an agreement with AT&amp;T, and that's kind of an agreement between those two parties as far as the city planning division and code divisions are concerned. It ultimately is the property owner's responsibility to ensure that maintenance is done. It is a condition of approval on this project that it have landscaping installed to city standards, and somebody has to maintain them. Whether or not they have an agreement between the two of them, that's really between the two of them.
Bud, is planning prepared to make this presentation today for the hearing?
Yes, I believe Greg is prepared to make the presentation.
Because I think the comments you're making really should be in the context of the hearing. Why don't we go ahead and have the hearing, especially since the applicant's representative is here?
Okay. Greg, is that, are you prepared for a brief presentation on this?
Okay.
Can I ask a question, though, before we move in that direction? What is the ramification if we deny it today because we're unwilling to waive?
You would approve it with the conditions.
We would approve it based on these.
And then at least that way, they know where you're coming from, and they can move forward on their business decision. Or you can change the conditions if that's...
Okay, well, let's go ahead with the public hearings, and at this point, we'll ask the staff member Greg Truesdale, the associate planner, to discuss this item, and then we'll open it for a public hearing. We can address those questions, and then we'll decide on the issue. Greg?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. The item before you is CUPO 1, which is a request to install a new 68-foot-high telecommunications monopalm at 38005 Vista del Sol. The CVWD wellsite is located southwest corner of Frank Sinatra and Vista del Sol in an RE zone. To the west is an existing RV storage lot. To the south is vacant, also owned by the Rancho Mirage Country Club. This is a deciding question, does show the new monopalm. In 2002, the city council approved AT&amp;T Wireless to install a small equipment building and then to install their equipment on the existing 81-foot-high CVWD telecommunications tower. So it's showing that the existing tower is about eight feet from the property line, so their facilities exist at that location presently, and the new facility, of course, was going to be to the north, about 32 feet north of the south property line adjacent to the existing building. This is a typical diagram, because we've had numerous monopoms proposed in the past. So this shows in the left-hand corner the design specs, and then the bottom shows the existing building that, they're not changing it, but that's the existing building on This exhibit shows the, so they're going to move the equipment from the CVWD tower over to the monopalm, so this shows, looking north on the left, the new monopalm with the fronds, the box fronds up to 75 feet, and then again, the one to the right shows what it would look like from the east elevation, and then again, on the bottom, it showed the existing building. This shows the other views. You have it looking south from Frank Sinatra on the left, and then again, on the opposite side, showing it from Vista del Sol. So as part of these applications, we require that they do photosimulation, so the council is familiar with these diagrams, so it's basically trying to superimpose the new monopalm against what would be left, because the CVWD has indicated they do not want to remove their tower. So it shows the monopalm, and then to the right, showing the CVW tower without the AT&amp;T This would be from the Vista del Sol, south of the location. So again, this is about 200 feet from the site, but it does give you, you have the existing overhead lines, but it does show the new monopalm and then, of course, the tower. This is kind of from the Rancho Mirage Country Club property in the back, kind of looking, you have the RV lot, and then you have the proposed facilities again. And this is across the street, there's a vacant piece across the street that's zoned RL3, that's vacant, about one acre. I did talk to that gentleman in the past. He was interested in it, I sent him the drawings. He never got back to me, but I told him that the monopalm is a design the city council has approved in the past, and there are ficus, there are not ficus trees, eucalyptus trees out there that do cosmetically conceal it, although this shot is actually taken a little bit south of the site, but they were trying to show how it would look, so they actually did that on my account, because we were going to have a photo further up. This, as noted in the report, there was a landscape plan approved in 2002. This, as noted in the report, the, there was a landscape plan approved in 2002. At that time, when the AT&amp;T added their facilities to the CVWD facilities, there were new trees that were installed on the perimeter. And so, part of the discussion with the planning commission has been that one item occurred was the maintenance on Vista Del Sol has not been very good over the years, and so part of the discussion has been about the parkway. And then, as well, I think condition nine was discussion about the parkway, including a new enhanced driveway, and then there's a wrought iron fence out on Vista Del Sol. There was, the condition also talks about putting in a view opaque fence, so you can't see into the facility. So, this, I kind of tried to highlight some of the conditions that have been talked about with AT&amp;T, so they are correct, we did add conditions, because it's basically considered a new application, moving their facility over, they consider it basically kind of a similar application, and, but we thought since it's been a number of years, and they're asking for the new monopalm, that we would ask for additional upgrades to the site. So, those, condition 11, nine, have been in discussion. The planning commission had a lot of discussion at their June meeting. At that time, the applicant asked for a continuance. Planning commission felt that the conditions were valid, therefore, they approved the project with a 5-0 vote, basically having the AT&amp;T work with the water district to, if the conditions, if they're not happy with the conditions, maybe the water district would incur those costs, or they would share the costs. So, the minutes kind of reflect a similar type occurrence here today in that AT&amp;T believes some of the conditions are beyond their scope, the commission thought they were adequate. So, as Bud mentioned, we did, because it was, since it was approved and moved forward, we had scheduled it for this meeting, and then after the notices went out, we were requested to continue it. They didn't give us a date certain, but we said, well, we go ahead and request with the city council that it be either reviewed on this date, or continued to a date specific. So, we set 30-day notice was what we put in the report. So, again, I've not spoken to AT&amp;T since the meeting, but I believe they are unhappy with some of the conditions as shown in your report, so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Steve?
I just read the letter that was submitted during this meeting, and what they're asking for, they're asking for the city to waive conditions 9A and B that provide that the applicant needs to install these decorative pavers or enhanced concrete for the drive apron between the curb and the entry gate. And they're also objecting to the improvements for this vehicle entry and pedestrian gates that have to be upgraded. They're claiming that CVWD, as a property owner, should install those improvements. They had a conversation with CVWD, and CVWD said no, they should install the improvements. And so, that's between the two of them.
Exactly.
With respect to number 11, that's the one, that's the condition that requires the applicant to submit a maintenance program. So, I don't, I don't think that they're objecting, or a maintenance plan, I don't think they're objecting to that, they're just saying that they believe that, they want that to be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit, and I can't tell from the condition when that is currently due, but those are the three issues they raised.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of council with staff on this issue?
Well, I'm curious what staff's response is to waiting to get the maintenance plan prior to issuing the building permit. Does that create any big issue, or is that a reasonable request?
Maybe Greg can respond to that.
Realistically, I'd like to have before the purban is issued, because we're just, actually, in 2002, they did execute an agreement to maintain the site, so realistically, what we're doing now is just updating the information, but I don't believe it would be too tough to have it before a building permit is issued, because they're supposed to be doing the maintenance currently, anyway.
So, you're saying if we modified, if the council modified the condition to, say, prior to building permit, that would be acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, Russ, did you have a comment? Dana, any further comments?
I do want to say that I have iPhone and iPad contracts with AT&amp;T, I just wanted to disclose that. I would like very much to have better AT&amp;T reception in the city, so I'm just declaring that I don't think it's grounds for me to recuse myself, but I wanted to point it out.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the public hearing, and I do have a request from Joshua Abba to speak
Good afternoon, my name is Joshua Abba, I'm representing AT&amp;T.
Good afternoon, Joshua, would you pull the microphone up? That's good.
Okay, good. I believe, I appreciate you, Steve, I'm sorry, Mr. Cantina, I believe you kind of...
Josh, speak in a way that we can all hear and understand you.
Can you not hear me? Is that better? There we go.
Stand up, just talk louder. There you go.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, thank you for clarifying some of those items, we definitely are okay with item number 11, the maintenance agreement is fine, we just needed prior to building permits, I wanted to have it at this council meeting, but we didn't have it in time, that's why, that was one of the reasons for the continuance. So, AT&amp;T so far has actually been out there twice, trying to fix some of the maintenance issues that are occurring right now, broken branches, dead bushes, whatever, they've been out there a few times, so they're trying to satisfy the city's requests at this time. The other request was to add landscaping, they have no issues with that as well. I believe Greg showed a diagram of the landscaping plan from 2002, and we're going to basically modify the site to reflect that. The biggest issue is the items number 9A and 9B, the pavers and the gate. At the other, at the other hearing that we had prior to this, we told them the exact same, we had the exact same issue, which was, AT&amp;T obviously doesn't own this facility, we're just a tenant, and we have improved the property by landscaping. In fact, this monopalm is actually helping CVWD, because they want more room, you know, they basically wanted us off of their tower for interference issues, so we're creating more space for them, and I think that our monopalm, if you can, you saw from some of the Sims, basically, it kind of hides the lattice tower, which I think is pretty appealing, you know, for most people who do, I believe the city didn't even want the, you know, they want that tower gone altogether, but that's a whole nother, that's a separate issue. Our biggest thing, again, is the pavers and the new gate. There's just, at this time, there's no way, and in AT&amp;T, we have a budget for every project that we do, every modification that we do, and this is considered a modification, and we're already well above it because of, you know, the monopalm, and, you know, the other things that we're doing to the site. Adding this additional, you know, I think it's about $20,000 to $30,000 is what they estimated for the pavers and the new gate, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work, and it just doesn't, to us, make sense to be on our, as part of our conditions, again, because it's not our facility, it's Coachella Valley Water District's facility.
So, tell us, what's CVWD's view about that issue?
I included in that letter, a letter from Coachella Valley Water District, it's attached to the back of ours, and it's basically them saying they think that we should be responsible for the conditions imposed by the city. And then we're going back saying, well, it's not our facility, in fact, these conditions don't even apply with our proposal. I mean, beautifying the entrance, we feel that has nothing to do with AT&amp;T.
Maybe the two of you could split the cost and get your project done.
If Coachella Valley Water District is willing to do that, I mean, that's an option that AT&amp;T would approach, but they just, I mean, they gave us a letter saying, hey, we don't want to be responsible for any of this, so they wouldn't even be open to, I didn't have much conversation with them, because they basically just gave us this letter saying, and there's, I mean, it goes through, I believe it goes through like three different, you know, they have their levels of approval they have to go through, so I don't know how far it got, but we gave them different options, and we told them what we were willing to do. I don't think they're open to it, but I don't know if they're here to say that or not.
Can I ask Randy a question?
Sure.
Randy, first off, that corner section that CVWD has is already an eyesore, and nothing attractive about it in any way, shape, or form, and it is, as he points out, it is in a state of, if not disrepair, a lack of maintenance. I don't know that that condition that he's talking about, a 9A and B, really makes much sense for them to be putting on a new gate on property that CVWD owns, that's point A, point B. I've always thought that Vista Del Sol was considered by most people in the city to someday become another Vista Dunes, and that it has a lot of potential once the high tension wires are down, or removed, or whatever, but somewhere down the road. I don't know that it matters much whether we would approve a, one of these fake palm trees, which, by the way, doesn't really enhance it much, no offense to you. Does that add to the impossibility of the difficulty in getting, does that add to the difficulty in getting that street eventually into the shape that we want it to be in? Or does CVWD hold that property forever, and they can keep that even more odious tower that they have there, that is, belongs in our maintenance yard, not in the city?
Very good questions. The tower that's out there now, and the CVWD owns the site because it's a well site, they'll probably continue to own it in the foreseeable future, the tower that they have probably won't go anywhere either, because we've talked to them about upgrading that, and it's a trellis tower, they don't see any need to do it, it's, to them, it's function, to us, it's more form. In terms of upgrading Vista Del Sol and having the infrastructure improved, eventually, if those power lines go down, because they are the high tension lines, I don't think the city's going to cover that cost, but they could potentially do it with an assessment district, I think that'd be awfully expensive to do. The monopalm, I guess, is the best aesthetic solution, and sometimes you have to balance aesthetics with the needs of the community. If we have a cellphone service that we need to have in this community, that's the technology that's out there. It'd be nice if they could just bounce it off a satellite, we don't need cellphone towers, but unfortunately, they're not to that point yet. I've always said, when the last tower gets installed in the United States, that's when the technology will change, and they won't need them anymore, but, you know, at this point in time, the monopalm is probably the best solution. 68 feet tall seems very, very tall, certainly, it's a lot taller than we've approved elsewhere in the community, except maybe at Children's Museum, that might be a 50, 55 footer.
How tall is the tower? That's taller than that, though, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's the point, I think, is that the existing tower, the trellis tower, the real ugly trellis tower, is taller than the 68 feet tall. So, if you're going to approve a monopalm at this height, this is probably the place to do it. My question would be, you don't have a problem upgrading the landscaping of Vista Del Sol as required by the conditions?
No, that's, that's not an issue, and I know we're, Greg and I have talked about, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's a lot of good improvements, getting the landscaping upgraded on Vista Del Sol, because that's at eye level when you come down the street, more so than the tall monopalm is, and the conditions related to the decorative pavers and the vehicle entry gate. Sarah, you said that you have a picture of that, let's see what we're looking at here.
By the way, as we're doing that, there's the wall on, running east and west on the south side, is that, is the property on the other side of the wall also owned by CVWD, or is that some residential?
I believe the property line does go just outside of there, and that's where we actually, in that corner, there should be an actual tree, in that area, there should be another tree right there, which is going to be installed, yeah.
You know, going back to that picture showing the entryway and the gate, I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference to all of that area, whether there's pavers put in there or not.
If you're going to compromise on the pavers, that's one thing.
I agree.
I would suggest, though, that you stick with the requirement that the gate be made a, put some sheet metal attached that's attractively designed and painted.
Sheet metal attached to the gate?
Well, that would be a solid, a solid gate.
So, you couldn't see through it?
Yeah, and I think that's probably the standard in most of the well sites, although this is an older well site, I think that's why it hasn't been retrofitted.
But suppose CVD, CVWD says no. I mean, they can't do it without CVWD's permission, they could take on the expense, CVWD would probably say okay, so what is AT&amp;T's position with respect to changing out the fence so you can't see through it?
I mean, their position is no, because it's not their facility.
I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, their position is no, because it's not their facility.
How about if the cost is substantially reduced, because all you need to put in is some sheet metal, you're going to...
Then, if that was the case, and the condition was revised, I absolutely can take that back to AT&amp;T, it would be reconsidered, yes.
So, if we modified how you could do it, not have to put in a new gate, but to simply block, or put in sheet metal over the rods, that'd be probably fine, you think?
I can absolutely take that to them, and I, I mean, I can guarantee that it would at least be viewed.
The conditions actually, that's how it was written, we didn't ask for a new gate, it was, the backing material was to be added to, the existing gate was all, that's what the condition actually says.
Okay, maybe that was a misunderstanding, or...
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Greg. That's an explanation of the way it's written.
Yeah, I would think that the big cost is really the requirement for interlocking pavers, I mean, those suckers are expensive.
It is.
And if you're going to cover it so that you can't see in, then is that really that big a deal?
Yeah.
It's also not on Frank Sinatra, it's on the side streets, so it's also not super prominent to the majority of the traffic passing by.
Yeah, traffic's not going to see it. Did we get any responses from any of the property owners to the notice that you sent out?
We did the expanded notice to 1,000 feet, the only gentleman I spoke to was the gentleman that owned the vacant lot across the street, and he thought since it was a monopalm design, that would probably be acceptable, but I never got anything in writing. But back to the question of the driveway, we're only talking about basically a plus or minus 30-foot distance, which is about the length of...
Yeah, but you know CVWD like the rest of us know it, you know, they'll, they say no, it doesn't matter that it's 30 feet or 10 feet.
I mean, I just wanted to say that, that's kind of almost a typical driveway for a house, so, I mean, we're not talking, talking 400 feet or something, it's basically between...
I could tell you one thing, that there's an awful lot of AT&amp;T iPhone owners that would like to see this tower go in, because the AT&amp;T coverage in our city is well below par.
Okay, any further questions, Mr. Abba?
No, and I, I think it's already, I believe Scott made, or Mr. Heinz made a comment about the detriment of not approving it, you know, we wouldn't be able to bring 4G to that area, at least to that portion of the city, which I think is, Mr. Hobart said is important.
Okay, great, thank you for being here today. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council. What do we want to do here? Dana, you want to propose something?
Well, yeah, I think we should do as we've more or less...
Yeah, I think we should do as we've more or less tentatively agreed. I think we should move approval, subject to the modification of condition nine B. Should we strike it?
What I heard is that there's, you guys, a couple of words, trying to strike nine A, but keep nine B and modify it to read as follows. "The vehicle entry and pedestrian gates shall be upgraded to screen the facility by adding a solid metal cover over the existing gates."
Right. And remove the item regarding the pavers.
Nine A.
And then number eleven, we would just amend that condition to make the requirement that they submit a regular maintenance program prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Well, what is, are we going to have to spell out what the maintenance program is, how broad it is going to be? I mean, there's, you know, an acre or so, or a half, not an acre, about a quarter or a half acre in there. They don't have to maintain the whole site, I wouldn't think. Within X number of feet of the pole that they're putting in, perhaps?
Well, the, part of it goes back to the 2002 entitlement where they were asked to put in additional landscaping when they put their facilities on the tower. So that agreement's in place. Basically, what we're asking them to do is update it.
We're asking who to upgrade it?
Well, it'd be AT&amp;T needs to upgrade the contractual arrangement. And then the maintenance aspect, we've told them all along, is either a shared, shared design with the water district, because the water district had landscaping on the site. They added to it. So we've basically told them is bring in how you're going to maintain the property, whether or not CVWD takes care of the whole maintenance and they pay CVWD, or they split the cost. But we've never been able to get them to define who's going to, who's responsible and who the city contacts to make sure the property is maintained. And that's kind of been the problem.
Well, we're using, as I said, it sounds like we're using AT&amp;T as sort of foil for CVWD. AT&amp;T doesn't own any of the land. We're saying maintain the land. And we're not saying it to the landowner. We're saying it to a modest user of a portion of that land.
Correct.
Can we impose a condition of maintenance on them if they don't have the right to handle the real property?
Well, you did, you did actually in 2002. So the agreement exists. So they just need to update it.
Was that with AT&amp;T at that time?
It's a contractual arrangement between AT&amp;T and the city.
And have they maintained it since that time?
It hasn't been maintained as it should have been. But you're correct, there's been some fallback. Some of it's probably the city's responsibility, but yes. So the idea now is to clean it up, get it back on track. And then, of course, they're requesting new facilities to add to the property or basically transfer to a new...
Okay. The only thing I was just concerned about is we don't want to get down into a spitting contest between CVWD and AT&amp;T and who's going to handle some minor maintenance tasks. You can't even make that, even with good maintenance, you're not going to make that look any good.
Actually, I mean, this case is kind of interesting because it kind of goes back to kind of a similar problem that we had with Verizon at the, the substation. They actually got the entitlement. There was the conditions that they were supposed to help with the landscape maintenance and also to add additional landscaping. And in the end, Verizon couldn't reach an agreement with SCE. And actually, at the time, they said they were actually going to come back and try to modify the conditions. What ended up happening was they just abandoned the CEP application that you spent a lot of time on to get the agreement that we thought we actually had, where Verizon would actually put out some of the maintenance costs because they were installing palm trees for the monopalm facility. So it's kind of a similar, it's, it's, it's an ongoing issue because part of our application, we require additional landscaping with monopalm designs. And the water district, I'm sure, is not going to say, they install the landscaping, we're just going to be, we're going to let them off the hook for maintenance. So that's, you're right. In the end, the city always can go back to the property owner. And if that occurs, then I guess the, would be a normal occurrence, they would back bill AT&amp;T. We were kind of hoping to reach a happy medium where we could find out, because I mentioned AT&amp;T, if the water district wants to maintain the whole thing and you're just doing a percentage interest, as long as they're maintaining that, that's great. But you have an interest in certain items for your facility that maybe you only want to maintain, and it's at your cost, and maybe the cost is cheaper. That's kind of the problem we run into.
We'll just leave it to them to work out. There is one other issue that I'd like to get some input from our people. I'll introduce this in a very negative way. Anytime, people have called me saying they have contacted AT&amp;T complaining about the lack of good reception service in our city. They have all told me, I would say this has happened maybe four or five times over the last couple of years. They've always said that AT&amp;T says the city won't give us a permit. Now, we've tried. And I know that's not true. What I am concerned about is they get a permit, and as we know on page five dash fifteen of our book, we know that there are a number of permits that we have issued in the past that are still unfulfilled. And what I'd like to know is how we feel about issuing a, the permit, if this is legal, that the permit expires if within two years following the granting of the permit, the tower is not up and running, fully operational. Seems to me that's a condition we ought to put in here, because they could just sit on it. And they may anyway. They're not, they're much too big for us to intimidate them. But it is, it does seem aggravating when we have gone through, we have issued more permits over the eleven years I've been here. Huh?
They do expire.
They do expire, if they don't use them.
Within what period of time?
Conditional use permits expire on their own if they're not used, which means...
Within what period of time?
One year.
One year?
They have one year.
So if we don't say anything, it expires at the term of one year?
Right.
Okay, well, that works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
The motion is, we prove it with the conditions indicated, except we have stricken nine B.
Nine A.
Nine A, and we leave the rest of them the way they are.
Modify nine B to read, "The vehicle entry and pedestrian gates shall be upgraded to screen the facility by adding a solid metal cover over the existing gates." I suggest, too, for clarification, so there's no confusion, that you amend the second bullet point of condition number eleven to read, "Submit a plan for monthly maintenance prior to issuance of building permits."
Okay, consider that the language that we've just added to the motion.
Second?
Okay, there's a motion. In a second, please vote.
Well, I pushed it once, I'll push it again.
Okay, the motion carries five zero, and with that, I'll close the public hearing. Item number seven is next under public hearings.
Seven or six?
Six, under public hearings. See, Dana, you're confusing me up here. This has to do with the community, Community Facilities District, number one, annexation number 161, Robert S. Weinstein. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. On July eighteenth of this year, a couple of months ago, the City Council adopted a series of resolutions that would set today's date, September third, as the time and place for the public hearing to conduct an election regarding the creation of a CFD for Police and Fire Services for Annexation Area Number 161. This is Annexation Number 161 to CFD Area Number One. The proposed annexation is a lot that's on Magnesia Falls Drive, just one lot off of Highway 111, just to the south. It's a comprehensively remodeled office building totaling forty-two hundred and thirty-five square feet. The annexation area is a little over half an acre in size, and the annual CFD revenue would be twenty-one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So, Mr. Mayor, the three resolutions in your packet need your approval. And after you open and close the public hearing, if you can approve those resolutions, that will allow this applicant to fulfill the required condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. And the annual revenue is going to be twenty-one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions from council on this item? At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this annexation? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And can I have a motion, please?
Okay, I will move that the City Council adopt Letter A, Resolution Number 2013, declaring the annexation of territory to an existing CFD and authorizing submittal of levy of special taxes to the qualified electors. And B, Resolution Number 2013, submitting to qualified electors a proposition to levy a tax and setting forth certain procedural requirements for conducting an election. And C, Resolution 2013, declaring the results of the election.
Okay, there's a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. And motion carries five zero. Did I close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Okay, item number seven, Community Facilities District, number one, Annexation Number 160, Family Development Group, Inc. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item number seven consists of three components. Seven A, as you mentioned, is a CFD. Seven B is the approval of the final map, and seven C is the preliminary development plan. This is the project called Revelle at the east end of Clancy Lane. Item number one, the CFD is like the one that you just acted on. It's a required condition of approval of the tentative tract map. This would annex the property if you approve these three resolutions to the CFD area. It's six and, six point eight, six acres in size, thirty-two single-family lots, annual CFD revenue of eleven thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-two cents. Item B, seven B, is the final map. Now typically, the final map is on your consent calendar because it's simply finding the final map to be substantially in conformance with the tentative map and all the required conditions of approval. As of the writing of this staff report, there was one condition that had not been fulfilled, and that is the improvement bonds that were required. The, we put it on the agenda anyhow, thinking that the applicant may be able to get that resolved. Apparently, it hasn't been resolved yet, but it will be soon. So we'd like to recommend that item seven B, the final map, be continued to your September sixteenth council meeting. So you would act on item seven A, and then item seven C. Josh Altapp, associate planner, is here to make the presentation on the preliminary development plan.
Thank you, Randy. Councilmember's mayor. This is a request, PDP 13003. The applicant is Family Development Group. This is an area of the site location. We can look at the north of the slide there. See, Verbinia Road. To the east is Monterey Avenue, and this project is bounded by Clancy Lane to the south. This was approved as part of tentative tract map thirty-six, two thirty-five, which was a total of eighteen acres and thirty-two residential lots. The parcels themselves have a split zoning of RE on the western portion and RL2 in the remaining. Adjacent to the property to the west is the residential estate zone Renaissance Properties. And then to the east is the CVWD well site and the Edison Substation. The school, former Marywood School, was recently demolished, and the site is currently having grading activities. This is the tentative tract map. The density is one point eight, seventy-eight dwelling units per acre. The maximum was allowed two. The proposed name of the subdivision is Revelle. All public improvements, both private and public, are per city standards. The site is relatively flat. You can see by the elevations marked there. We have two oh four at the southern portion. We have up here at two oh five at the north. So the site's relatively flat. The drains will flow to the south through retention basin located here on the southeast corner. The parcels themselves range from fifteen thousand square feet to a little over sixteen for the RL2 and a little over one point one seven to one point one nine for the RE zone properties. All proposed lots meet the minimum width and depth of each respective zone. This is the home placement plan to show how the homes will lay out on each respective lot. The setbacks for both the RE and the RL2 are the same, twenty-five front and rear, ten on the sides, and fifteen on the street side. All setback for each of the proposed homes are met. The maximum lot coverage allowed for these zones is thirty. The homes range between eight and thirty percent. The breakdown of the units will be eleven Plan Ones, nine Plan Twos, three Plan Sixes, four Plan Fours, and two Plan Fives. Here's an example. I'm not going to go through all five floor plans, but here's a sample of Plan Number One. It's thirty-two hundred ninety-seven square feet with a six hundred and fifty square foot three-car garage. We can see the master suite is behind the three-car garage, guest bedrooms and family bedrooms adjacent. You have your formal dining and kitchen in the middle and your great room all the way to the far side. As part of each of these homes, the applicant has wanting to give a variety of options. This is the options for the Plan One. We can have such amenities as an exercise yoga room, wine and wet bar. The bedroom number four can be a den. We can reverse the great room, options off the master suite for home theater. We have options of raised flooring, raised courtyard, casitas, and an entry canopy with a gate. The idea behind it was to create as much variety in these homes so that each home never looked the same as any other home. You'd have a truly unique and one-of-a-kind type of a design. Here's a sample of the Plan One elevations. This is the desert modern style. We can see heights vary between twelve foot up to nineteen six. Maximum is twenty allowed per code. These are all single-story homes. Such items as floor-to-ceiling windows, stacked stone, clear-story windows, and integrated patios. Here are two of the color schemes to show some of the samples. There are two types of architecture. There's a desert modern, which is on the top portion of the slide, and a desert contemporary. They are both cool and warm colors. Here are two samples of the material board. We can see a couple samples of the stucco colors, the siding, the stonework. There are five different total pattern, color, material board patterns, and they've included in your packets for your reference. Here is the Plan One. They have the roof plan, which is on the left, and then a 3D rendering. The roof plan shows, once again, how it varies, some heights as low as ten foot six and some of the eyebrows to as high as the nineteen six over the great room. You can see a great variety of depth and undulation throughout the home, creating a nice variety of architecture. This is the Plan Three. It's more huge shaped in design, creating some internal courtyards. It's a little over thirty-five hundred square feet with a seven hundred square foot garage. Off the garage, we have the formal dining room, which takes access onto the center courtyard. We have the kitchen behind that, the great room, and that living area in the center. And then off to the right, we have all the bedrooms, including the master bedroom. For the Plan Three, some of the options, once again, were the bedroom four den flex, morning flex room, which is like a breakfast nook off of the kitchen, the casita entry canopy. And then this option also allows for a private garden with outdoor shower. Here's the Plan Three. This is the desert modern design. Heights for this one vary approximately eleven foot and change, all the way up to seventeen-ten at its highest point. Each of these homes will have the retractable windows, the pocket windows that slide out, allowing openings both to the front and rear courtyards. They also have recessed windows for solar protection and then covered entries throughout the house. Here's the Plan Three with the two of the types again, desert modern at the top with the warm colors. We have the desert contemporary at the bottom with some of the cooler tones. Once again, the Plan Three, here's their aerial view. You can see it's eleven foot nine, as high as the nineteen-three. It's got a sloped pitch. You can kind of see from the 3D rendering where the great room and area starts small on the right and then exceeds to height. It gives it a nice variety. And then it also allows for each of these homes to have solar protection and, and backup, not only solar protection, but solar panels. Each of these homes are going to be equipped with solar. They're going to be able to, best of my understanding, if the applicant puts solar on, it'll be included as part of each of the homes. That's something for council to consider. I'm just going to go real quick through the other three elevations, just to give you a sample. This is the Plan Two. You can see the two different colored pilots again. Here is the Plan Four, and this is the Plan Five. The overall landscape plan, I'll start with the block walls. It's a eight-foot tan precision tool finish wall between the project site and the, and the SCE boundary. The code allows us for that additional height due to the nature of the public utility site and the equipment that's there. They're trying to screen it and protect it from the homes. And the perimeter block wall will be a stucco finish origami white, which will belong both Verbinia and Clancy. And then in between lots, it'll be a six-foot tan precision wall. The basin is surrounded by a wrought iron fence. That was discussed at the last planning commission meeting. Condition number twenty-two was modified to change that wrought iron fence to a block wall. The applicant has discussed that, and they're okay with that. That was a request at some of the homeowners. Along Clancy Lane, there's a seventeen-foot parkway, and then there's a six-foot meandering sidewalk along the project's frontage. The entrance there on Clancy will be a gated entry with decorative pavers, and then the exit off of Verbinia will be an exit only for residents. Here's a more specific detail of the entry. We can see parkways include thirty-six-inch box tipu, a desert palette of shrubs and base of thirty, excuse me, three-eighths inch crushed rock, which will be a color to patchy brown. The retention basin itself will have thirty-six-inch box palo verde and sweet acacia trees to the very top of the slopes, and then have shrubs and stuff along the edges and basin. The gated entry will be lined with eighteen-foot high date palms. along the edges and basin. The gated entry will be lined with 18-foot high date palms. Another topic that was discussed at the planning commission regarding the basin, over whether or not to add the amenities. I know it's been a discussion point for some of our council members as well as staff. The decision was that the applicant would consider putting in some amenities and work with staff on what those final outcome would be. So, just to let council know, that was also condition Number 22 that was modified per the planning commission. Here's just a sample of one of the typical front yards. It's going to have two 36-inch box tipu trees, one 24-inch box orchid trees. You'll have your same types of desert shrubs throughout, which include green carpet, orange bells, and Little John. Ground cover includes the areas of turf, which you can see adjacent to the curb, and crushed rock, which is the Apache brown. Each of the homes will have colored concrete driveways and walkways. This is a sample of Plan Number Three. Same thing, very similar in trees and nature, same types of shrubs, and then the ground cover with the Apache brown 3-inch inch rock. We did receive a letter from one of the adjacent homeowners. This gentleman's off of Verbinia. Let me go to that slide real quick. Slide number two. Okay. This gentleman actually lives at this particular home right here, and what his request was, is he received a letter from the adjacent homeowner, which can be seen on page 56 of your staff reports. The home is located to the north of the proposed subdivision off of Verbinia Drive. The homeowner's requested a 25-foot side yard setback along the northern property line for Lot 30. So, if we look at the tract map, let me go one forward, excuse me. This is Lot 30 right here. This is his home up here, excuse me, right here. And what he's requested is, because these homes here on 28, 29 have a rear setback, which is 25 feet, he's requested that this setback as well be 25 feet, so you can have consistency across the board. The same setbacks met, and each of those homeowners along Verbinia have the same, same right. Staff analyzed this. We felt it was a very logical approach. Staff is recommending to add condition Number 24, which says the side yard setback, which is the north property line for Lot 30 shall be 25 feet from property line. I've also let the developer know he's okay with that proposal, and that I recommend to add to the, to the conditions of approval. Other than that, staff hasn't received any other comments, both written or verbal, from any other adjacent homeowners, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions of the staff before we go to the public hearing? Okay, seeing no questions, we will now open the public hearing. And, pardon me. At this time, I don't believe we have anybody that's turned in a request to speak. So, anybody out there who would like to speak, please come forward and give your name and your city of residence.
Hi, my name is Nancy Spear, and I'm the manager of Monterey Estates Homeowners Association, which is located within the gated community of La Toraza. Our retention basin is located behind the four homes that are built on Verbinia. And this sole setback thing that you were just talking about includes our retention basin, which this developer has already driven a bulldozer through and compromised the slopes of that retention basin, not to mention that the grading that's been done so far has cracked our entire perimeter wall, and several of our homes have cracks in their ceilings and the walls from the 5.0 earthquake vibration that's been going on for weeks over there as they've been bringing in six feet of dirt fill to bring the level of that lot up to a foot below the street level so they can build the homes on top of it. And it's only going to get worse because they've barely started, and they're bringing in dirt and compacting and bringing in dirt and compacting. So, I would like for condition of approval to be that our retention basin be restored as soon as they get finished shaking everything up, and that our homes that are damaged be repaired. And the superintendent was notified, but he no longer works for the development company or has been transferred. And code enforcement has been notified of all of this activity as well. They've been out to see the walls in some of the homes. And the code enforcement was also notified because they've been bringing in equipment late at night on a Friday, bringing and starting too early in the morning, and they've been written up multiple times so far already, and hopefully, that's under control now. But, we had no idea that all of this was going to be affecting our community in this way. And now, when I see that picture of the, the house at the end that wants the setback requirement, that's digging right into our property. Our retention basin is located completely outside of our gated community because GHA, who built our community, needed another retention basin to meet a 100-year flood requirement. So, what they did was they, Westman owned the lot where the four homes were built, and he did some sort of a trade somewhere to give GHA, who was a partner on other projects, extra property. So, they built, our retention basin within the gated community has a tube, and the water fills up from La Toraza to La Toraza to La Toraza, and eventually ends up in our last retention basin. And then the water goes up into the tube and bleeds underneath the fourth house, which is on the Monterey side of the four homes, and then fills up that whole canyon behind the four homes, which is in between the family development property and the four homes. So, it's, it's, we have a retention basin outside of our gates that we maintain, and they've driven a bulldozer through. And, and I'm concerned about, you know, they tore out all the trees and everything, the bushes, I should say, that had root systems that were keeping the walls intact of the dirt basin. It's just a mess. There's not even an easement agreement with the fourth house to have this pipe run underneath their home. And when Westman built the four homes, they pushed the dirt level back, changing the slope of the original graded plan for that retention basin. And this grader didn't realize that that part of the property wasn't theirs until later, after they already drove the bulldozer through it. So, that all needs to be addressed.
Stay right there. Josh, would you address this, or Randy?
Josh, let me, let me take a crack at it, and then you can add if you'd like to. I was the planner that worked on that project. Those four lots are part of the Monterey Estates subdivision.
No, they're not.
Yeah, they're part of the tentative tract map, and that, go ahead and go back to the exhibit, please.
Well, something changed there because they don't pay dues to us. It is not part of my association.
This lot is maintained by your association.
That, that lot, yes, but not the four homes are not part of our tract.
Okay. That retention basin is, is your retention basin for your project.
Right.
So, you have to maintain it. Now, I think when it comes to the hearing, Mr. Mayor, if you ask the developer if he will restore that basin, let him go ahead and respond to that. But in terms of the setback that you're talking about, the 25-foot setback would be from that property line.
From our property line?
Yes.
Not from the homeowner's property line?
Right.
Okay.
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 That's, I think, answers your question.
So, that gets their, that gets their block wall even further away from our retention basin, then?
It puts the house further away from your retention basin.
Their house.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's right. Is that right, Josh? Okay. Yeah, so it's, they're not going into your retention basin. That's your retention basin. If they've damaged it, maybe they can talk about that when they get up to talk.
And the vibration that has, these people have been living in this constant shaking for days on end.
And let's see if they can answer that as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Hammy. I live at One Straw Terrace at the Renaissance. My wife couldn't be here today, but she's the president of the Board of Directors of the Renaissance and also on the Board of Directors of the Clancy Lane Protective Association. I know the, we strongly oppose this project from the very beginning with the concept that it was not in keeping with the flavor of what Clancy Lane is, that we feel has a special character in the desert. It's unique. It's one-of-a-kind. It will, will never be duplicated in the desert, other than maybe out in thermal someday when they develop that property out. But the die is cast. You've approved the subdivision, and that's fine, and I wish the developer well. This morning, this afternoon, or rather, this morning, I talked to Mario Gonzalez, who had called me, because he had done the project on the end of Clancy Lane, as you know, and he built a beautiful project there. And he reminded me of the requirements that the city had insisted when he built his project at the other end of Clancy Lane. And we had a nice discussion because Mario has, has good ties to family development, and I think they have a close friendship. And we both agreed that the, the best way is to try to accommodate everybody and make it as, as good as it can be for the neighborhood. Now, the first thing that Mario and I agreed upon is that we should make it clear for now and forevermore that the gate on Clancy Lane cannot be used by that development, period. They have no right to use it, but we want to make that clear legally. And all it takes is for a simple easement agreement or negative covenant to be recorded against the property. So, if somebody buys that home down the road, that will be in their title report, and they'll, that's a condition they'll have to abide by. And I think the developers made it clear that they really don't intend to be a part of Clancy Lane, that it's segregated by the gate. It's at the other end. And I even, you know, got a recording of the, the planning commission meeting, and they even mentioned the term that they have no desire to go through the gate. So, what I'm saying is the road to hell is paved with good intentions, but just like those bulldozers out there, why not put it in writing, make as a condition that condition Number 25, or whatever it is, that a simple easement or a negative covenant agreement be recorded to make it clear that there is no access of ingress and ingress, egress and ingress through that gate. That's first primary thing. That will help preserve the integrity of Clancy Lane, at least from the other direction. The second thing is, is on Clancy Lane, we would request that they upgrade the wall on Clancy Lane. I'm impressed that they, they've done a masonry wall. It was, I think it was my suggestion at the planning commission that they extend a masonry wall instead of a wrought iron wall where the, where the retention basin is. But I would suggest that the template of, of the wall is that the project, I think it's called Coronado at the corner of Choya, they have an incredibly beautiful wall. It goes, it's offset like this as it goes. It has lighting in the offset. It has, as Josh would say, quote, "warm desert colors," close quotes, as opposed to "cool" colors, which are inappropriate, I think, for our area. It might be great for Miami Beach, but it's not really appropriate for our area. So, what we're just saying is if they can warm up the temperature there, upgrade the wall. The other thing Mario suggested I had not thought about is he said, "Make sure that the gate is a, a gate that's totally covered, so you can't see in the gate," just like the Coronado project. I don't expect to have a copper gate. Poor developer has enough expenses to, to live with. But at least they could do a nice gate that's completely closed, so their project is, I don't want to say the word hidden, but secluded into where it is, because it's its own project. So, these suggestions, instead of being combative and sitting here and saying, "I don't think you should approve this plan," and, you know, I respect the developer. I wish him well, but at least this would help the community and have us all live together so it's a better project. I'm also impressed that they're putting a sidewalk in. It would be great if they could extend that sidewalk through the, the Rock Garden that the Coachella Valley Water District has to the end of the street, because people, you know, then they don't have to drive down Clancy. And I'll just tell you, the amount of traffic that's going to occur at that traffic light from this project is going to be significant. Now, I don't have to live with it, because I go in the back entrance of the Renaissance. Thank God we have that, where I can go in from Clancy. But that's a narrow street, and the turn signal that goes into Clancy Lane from the highway from Monterey is extremely narrow. That is, all the lanes, they are very narrow. If you're parked there, you, you truly become a great believer in the God Almighty, because your life is in danger. And the city, much to your credit, put the turn lane in in the opposite direction, but it's only a turn lane for maybe two cars. I mean, really, and you're going down Monterey at 60 miles an hour, and know the speed limit may be 45 or 50, and turn in there, there's going to be a lot of people that are going into that project. So, that's just an issue. I don't know. You can't really do anything about it. Now, it's too late. But anyway, if at least we could get those conditions approved by the city, particularly the, the agreement recorded on the property about the back gate, it will really buy a lot of peace for everybody that lives on that neighborhood.
Mark, have you talked to them to, to determine if they are willing to have that as a condition?
I had made the assumption, Councilman, that they, I have not talked to them. That's a good attorney answer. No. The follow-up is because of their comment at the planning commission meeting, I did not think it was necessary. And I had mentioned it to the mayor about putting that condition. As you know, as an attorney, it's a very simple agreement. It's a one-page agri, I'll be happy to do it.
The, the reason I asked you, you're right. It's a simple deal if Parties A and Parties B agree. My limited insight into this, that issue is that they don't agree to that. And if that's the case, then we, we can't put it in as a condition if they're not agreeing to it, because it's going to be subject to litigation. They, one side or the other will sue. They'll probably sue to gain entry to it, and some judge, rather than some city council, will end up making the decision on whether or not they have access or don't.
I'm, I'm happy. My, my skepticism made me get a recording of that planning commission meeting, because I thought that might be Exhibit A someday in litigation. However, I think you can impose most any reasonable condition you want on that project now. This is the, you can be the peacemaker. You really can. Right now, you have that power.
That would be gaining peace. That, I think, I think would be shot at least from that side, but not from your side.
There's no people living there now. There's no one there now. There's a developer that's in here that's, that's trying to do what their project is on a project that the people who've lived in the city couldn't stand in that area uniformly. 5-0 Planning Commission against it. We got it now. So, why should now we have to take this, what we think is the carbuncle on Clancy Lane, we have a gate, and now the city council is saying, "Well, we're going to approve this, but good luck with your litigation," and spend $200,000 on litigation down the road? Because, believe me, it will be acrimonious litigation if it goes forward. I think the city attorney can advise you that under constitutional law, you can impose reasonable requirements, like you, of access and ingress and how they can come and where they can come out of. Why not get it done now? And I, frankly, I think family development is probably in for, in favor of that, because they mentioned that at the last planning commission meeting. So, maybe we don't have a problem.
That's probably one thing, but Steve, why don't you tell us what you advise us with respect to that issue?
I mean, I really can't say whether or not. I've never rendered an opinion on whether or not they have legal access through that gate.
Correct.
That's always been controlled by your CCNRs.
Right.
It's my understanding with respect to the four or five people raised this issue every couple of years.
Correct.
And so, we've been staying out of that debate. I'm not sure whether they have access, and where is, where is the access shown on the map? We essentially tell them where their access is, and I assume we dealt with that issue on the map.
As an example, on Verbinia, you have told them that they don't have access to exit, strike back, yes, to exit from the project on Verbinia. Technically, they have a right on the city street of Verbinia, but you've told them they don't have a right to go there when they exit. Why would it be any different than Clancy Lane to say, "We don't want you to burden with traffic that way. It's a condition of approval. We want you to go out from Clancy Lane to the Monterey versus going through that gate." I, I think you have the power to do that. That's all I'm saying.
Where's the access?
Down there at the bottom.
Oh, there.
Excuse me, right at the corner of the boundary there between Renaissance.
Where's the gate?
See the circle? It's hard to see from the area. See the circle I drew at the bottom in the middle of the screen?
The access to the project is?
Oh, it's, it's going to be approximately right in this general area.
Yeah.
Okay.
Clancy Lane's a private street, isn't it?
Why would they go through Clancy Lane gate to get there?
It's going the other direction. If they want to go to Bob Hope, they want to go the other direction.
Right.
So, Mark, have you talked with the other parties to see if they're willing to sign an agreement?
You know, I, I, I have not talked to the other parties to do that. I just, I just figured, well, frankly, from the comments that were made at the planning commission meeting, I figured it would be easy for the city to just make it a condition of approval, that you're not going to have access down Clancy Lane to Bob Hope. If the city had a problem with that, they could allow ingress to Verbinia from this project, which would give them access to Bob Hope, right? You just did the, the flow-through street by, you know, from Bob Hope. It comes right down, and you could go to Bob Hope that way, the other way. So, here you have a gated community, and the only, I don't even know how they would claim access through that gate, but why buy a lawsuit if we can get rid of this issue now? access through that gate, but why buy a lawsuit if we can get rid of this issue now? It's a condition of approval.
The rule is that the city can impose a condition of approval, provided that there's an access between that condition and some mitigation issue. Like, for instance, it creates a traffic hazard or adds, you know, unreasonable burden on traffic down that street, that we'd have to make a finding that there's something that we need to mitigate, and that that condition is specifically drawn up to mitigate that particular issue.
Well, I don't think the report, the negative declaration report, whatever, went into the traffic on that part of Clancy Lane, because there is a gate there. As you well know, this is a country lane that is very narrow, no curb, nothing on the sides of it. People walk on that street, it has a 25 mile an hour speed limit, people are walking with their dogs, it's essentially a park. Really, it's a park. So to have this project with 35 homes, gardeners, guests, and whatever being driven on that, Clancy Lane doesn't have a stoplight, as you know on Bob Hope, that's extremely dangerous. Now, if you're going to put so many more cars on that street, it's a dangerous situation. Then this project should be delayed till we study the impact, so you can have a negative declaration on that.
Well, we appreciate your comments, Mark.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, isn't, I thought the history is that Clancy Lane was made into a private street that's then maintained by the residents, is that not the case? It's a public access, public street?
No, you're right, Councilman, it is a private street. Not sure, is it private from the gate to Monterey, or is that public? The whole thing is private. The whole street's private.
I mean, to me, that makes a bit of a difference. If it's a private street, why would we make it a public access where people can cut through to Monterey, whether they live in that community or not?
Do you mind, Councilman, if I just showed the area and kind of explained to help hopefully clarify some of the confusion? So the way the project is designed, your main entry is off the south, off of Clancy Lane, that'll be your main in and out. We conditioned, and they have as part of their final map, a secondary exit only onto Verbena Drive, so that residents can go out Verbena, if in case they want to go back north up to Country Club and then over to Bob Hope. Because the gate is located on Clancy Lane, these residents won't have any access to go down Clancy Lane all the way to Bob Hope. So if they come out the front gate there, the same gate they go in on Clancy, they're going to have to be forced to be a right-in, left-out, because they've got to go right back to Monterey. There's no choice to make a right-out and go down Bob Hope, go down Clancy to Bob Hope, it's not an option. So the traffic basically stays at this end of the street, either going north or going south, and then out to Monterey, or up Verbena to Toya, then up to Country Club.
Can you talk about that access on Verbena? Because Mr. Hammy said there was no access on Verbena.
And I think there may be just an informational update to him as part of the final on the map, staff condition that they widen it, and that it's actually an exit-only, it's not an entrance, but pedestrians can, or pedestrians and residents can exit that way, so they can make a right-out to Monterey, or they can make the left, and like I said, go up Verbena to Toya up to Country Club.
So if there's already a gate there, which I know there is, I've seen it, and it's a private street maintained by the people who live on Clancy Lane, why would we think that somehow the developers could or would have the legal right to demand access and have the gate removed?
Just because they're members of the...
Because they become part of the private street, and they're maintaining it.
Are you, but I don't believe they're going to be part of the Clancy Lane Protective Association. They're going to be separate, they're their own independent HOA. You know what, maybe we should let the applicant talk, just to kind of give some more info.
Okay, let's continue the public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? There is someone else who would like to speak. Okay.
Hi, my name's Jackie Fitzsimmons, and I currently live on Clancy Lane in the community of Mission Ranch. I know there's been a lot of talk about changing the character and the style of Clancy Lane, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with Mission Ranch, but I would say the majority, over 50% of the homes in Mission Ranch are more of a contemporary style. So I don't know what the problem would be with this development, I've looked at their plans, and I would say that they're right in line with what's already existing in my community. I'd also just want to say, with the conversation on the traffic, I don't know if you're aware, but that private gate was closed for a period of three to four months this past spring, and I think everybody and their dog knew that they could cut through on Monterey to get to Bob Hope, and there was no traffic problems whatsoever that I've noticed. In fact, I drive that road several times a day, my office is on Monterey, so I have to go out that entrance, and I've never even had to wait behind another vehicle at that stoplight. I've never noticed traffic on that road at all. I've never had to wait turning off of Monterey to get into Clancy Lane behind another vehicle either. So I don't really foresee the traffic being an issue at all. And I also just wanted to say that I do live in Mission Ranch now, but I have also lived in a family development home, and have purchased a home from family development in the past, and they're great guys to work with. Their floor plans are above all, better than any other developer that I've ever seen in the valley. And I think that this is a great product for this community, I think it's a great product for Clancy Lane, and I think it's going to do nothing but increase our home. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Can we have the developer place?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Vincent Barabato, and I am a resident of Palm Desert, and I am one of the members of the ownership of this property, which is actually Development Solutions RM LLC. Two of my partners, who are also members, are also Ranch Mirage longtime residents. I will get to Mr. Hammy's comments, out of respect for everybody's information, however, I do want to bring up the fact that those comments are not what we're here about. We're here to talk about architectural approval, I believe, that's what we're here for. But I will get to those comments. We designed, as Josh pointed out, we worked very closely with Josh, we designed five core floor plans for the community. The idea was to create a community that truly has a custom home feel to it. We want this to be a very special community, we want everybody, not just ourselves, but everybody in Ranch Mirage, to look at this as a highly coveted address. So we plan on building top-quality homes here. The five core floor plans do have many structural options. I believe when we did the combinations and permutations, and my statistics might be slightly rusty at this point in my life, but there are over 2,500 variations that people can choose from for these homes. So just in that alone, with only 32 homes, we are pretty confident in saying that no two homes are going to be alike, with the structural options, the floor plan options, the elevation options, as well as all the add-ons that people can have. So we've created a very custom home-like community. We've had an open-door, good neighbor policies from the beginning, we've reached out to the neighbors, we have had a website that we continually update to keep them informed, we've sent all of our neighbors a couple of different memos to keep them abreast of what's happening, not just with the city and approvals, but with also what's going on with grading. We do understand and recognize that grading does kick up some dirt and cause a little bit of a disruption, but we've tried to be as responsible as we possibly can. We are moving thousands of yards of dirt there, so there is going to be some dust, but we're trying to be very responsible, and we've actually received quite a few compliments from a lot of our neighbors about how well that's going. We do understand that there's some concerns, and we plan on addressing all those concerns as well. With your conditions of approval, there are two conditions that I would like the council to consider removing. One, I believe, is not even something that we can do, and that would be condition, I believe it's number 35, and it is the condition, it says, under Item B.I., the staff report notes...
Page 24.
Yeah, on page 24. It notes that the sidewalk on Clancy Lane for the project shall extend from the east tract boundary to Monterey Avenue. The problem with that is, we don't own that property, and we don't understand how we can be conditioned to put a sidewalk on property that we don't own. This apparently was spoke, addressed when the map was approved, and it was removed as a condition then. We spoke with Public Works, and Public Works agreed that to condition us would be very, very problematic, and they've agreed that it should not be a condition. So we would like for that to be removed, because again, we can't be responsible for improving a sidewalk on property that we don't own. The other condition that was noted, I believe it, I thought it was condition number 24, it's on page 20 in your report, and that is the condition to remove all turf from the front lawns. I found it a little strange that that condition got into our conditions, because at the Architectural Review Board, we actually spoke about that, and we all agreed, your board as well as we as developers, agreed that some turf should be offered, as long as it complied with the CVWD requirements. We don't like the idea of having to eliminate all turf, because in effect of creating a custom community, we do believe that we're going to have some homeowners, we're going to want to have some turf and some mounding to personalize their residence, and to make this not look like every other home in the community. And if you remove, or if you condition us to not have any turf, I think that takes away a lot of their ability to personalize their home. Of course, we will agree to comply with all CVWD's requirements, which definitely will stop anybody from having complete turf, because that's not drought-tolerant, but we don't want to see our neighbor, our homeowners be forbidden from including any turf on their front yards.
How would you phrase a condition that allowed you to have 25% of all the total front yards in turf, or 35 or 50%?
Yeah, or if you want to say that the turf will have to comply with CVWD's requirements, maybe that's something for your attorney, but that's certainly something that we...
That wasn't my question.
Yeah. Other than that, I think you'll find that our homes, we're not asking for any variances, all of our heights and everything, our setbacks, everything comply. We are open-minded, as Mr. Hammy pointed out, rather than being a developer that's trying to force our will on everybody. At the last Planning Commission, I believe he noted, and he was one that talked about the wrought iron fence that was previously approved around the retention basin, although it cost us more money naturally, we did agree to help our neighbors out and help the neighborhood out by making that a block wall to match our block wall. So we did agree to do that, as good neighbors. It wasn't talked about, but the gentleman who requested the setback on Lot 30, the gentleman that lives on Verbena, he wanted you guys to condition us, I did speak with Josh about that, and again, technically, that's a side yard, so it shouldn't be conditioned to the 25-yard, a 25-foot setback, but again, as good neighbors, we will agree to that as well, because we want the gentleman to be happy. Another thing that didn't come up today, but it came up in the Planning Commission, and although Planning Commission approved us, we did hear from two of the people that showed up at the Planning Commission, that they wanted to see more variety in our architecture. So since that time, we took the extra time and expense and commissioned our architect to create some Mediterranean elevations, to add in addition to our contemporary and our modern elevations, to create more diversity within the community. I did bring some samples of those with me today, and if it pleases the council, we would agree, provided that we could get it approved today, we would agree to add these Mediterranean elevations to our current mix, which would create even more diversity, and also add more flavor and more, well, more diversity to the community. In regards to Mr. Hammy's comments, we don't, again, we don't believe that that's what we're here today for. We believe that the question of access to that gate is a legal question. We are members of the protective, Clancy Lane Protective Group, HOA, we do pay dues, in that I believe, but I'm not an attorney, but I do believe that we have legal right to clickers for our residents, but that's something that we'll be happy to sit down with Mr. Hammy and talk about in private, it's not a, I don't believe that that's a council issue. I do think it's interesting that Mr. Hammy pointed out how terrible traffic's going to be on Monterey, because of these 32 residents, and I remind everybody, it's only 32 residents, and probably half of them won't even be living there full-time, but how there's going to be so much traffic on Monterey, yet he wouldn't want to ease that potential traffic by allowing our residents the right that we feel that they have, which is to have access to that clicker. And I do want to point out that, as Mr. Hammy, I believe, knows, and it's my understanding, only residents have clickers, gardeners and pool men and all the surface people do not have access to have clickers to that gate, so it would not be a ton of traffic. Our homeowners, at this point, are required to pay HOA fees for use of the private road, so again, we don't believe that that's an issue that is before you, but we will be happy to sit down with Mr. Hammy and his wife, who's the president, and discuss that, where it should be discussed, and that's not here at the council. With that, I think I've covered everything, I do want to thank...
Before you've covered everything, one more thing to cover. Am I correct in understanding that you are going to allow ingress and egress on the Verbena side?
It's an egress, it's an exit-only gate.
What's your objection to both?
I think the objection, I don't know that I have an objection, other than I believe it was a traffic issue for the city. It was a map condition, so we're simply following the map condition. It wasn't something that we asked for and got, it was already a condition of the map. And we agreed to add a man gate to it, to provide our residents with easy in-and-out pedestrian access.
Well, what's your attitude about having automobile ingress access on the Verbena side?
Well, I don't know that it's necessary, I think, again, with 32 residents, the entrance on Clancy is more than sufficient as an entrance.
More than sufficient for what? I mean, for example, wouldn't it benefit your argument, when you get into litigation with them over the clicker? Wouldn't it benefit your argument to say that the amount of traffic that would be going westbound on Clancy Lane is mitigated by the fact that we have allowed ingress to our project from Verbena? Ingress and egress?
Well, I have not given it any thought, Mr. Hobart, but I don't believe so, because as you know, the getting from Bob Hope using Verbena is not nearly as convenient as getting to the community off of Clancy Lane. But it's not an argument that I've given any thought to, and I don't know that I'm concerned about losing a legal issue with the HOA Protective Society.
You're not concerned about it? Whether or not you, the residents who buy from you are going to have westbound access, and eastbound for that matter?
Well...
On Clancy Lane?
If you allow me a moment...
I would be worried about it. But I'm just a lawyer.
I don't know that I have any issues with allowing people to enter the community off of Verbena. I'm simply respectfully telling you, it's this, I've had five minutes to digest this. So I, we simply were complying with your condition, so if you want to change that...
It would assist on two issues, as I see it. If you allowed ingress and egress from Verbena, that would, and assume for the moment, you have clicker access.
Okay.
It would reduce the number of vehicles that would be using Clancy Lane, having to go through the gate.
You would think so, yes.
I mean, just to some extent, the percentages, we could argue, but it would also give you an argument that if you do end up in litigation, is that you have tried... if you do end up in litigation, is that you have tried to reduce the wear and tear on Clancy Lane for travel coming from our east end because we have allowed our vehicles to both enter and exit on Verbena. I mean, it seems to me like those are two good arguments also. It would, it seems to me it would mollify Clancy Lane residents to some extent, to know that you've done that, that you've allowed vehicles to come in and out on Verbena. I mean, it's, it's just a thought that occurs to me that makes some degree of sense.
Well, I, logically, I think it makes all the sense in the world. Legally, I don't know because I'm not an attorney. Again-
Well, I am an attorney and I could tell you legally-
Thank you for the, for the free counsel.
It's not against law for you to allow ingress and egress.
If, if the city, if it's the council's desire to have us make the Verbena exit and entry and exit, that is, we are willing to accept that as well. That is perfectly fine. We're not going to fight against that or ask for that not to be considered. So that, that is acceptable. But I, but I, but as far as-
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's good for everybody-
Okay.
-that you do that.
Well then-
Including all the people who live in the homes that you're going to be selling.
I, I don't disagree.
And I also wanted to thank you for adding the Mediterranean elevations to the pot that your purchasers can pick from.
Well, thank you. I think it's going to be a nice improvement.
That's-
Peter Piper picked-
Yeah.
-a pot of purchased elevations. Yes.
So if there's going to be, if Verbena was going to be allowed for entry, is there a, an issue with Monterey?
There's a problem on that?
I believe there, yes, there was a reason for eliminating or not allowing ingress off of Verbena. Bill, do you remember what that, there was a long discussion on this, I remember the council meeting.
Egress, you're saying it was wrong?
We, we allowed the, the egress. We didn't, we restricted the ingress for some reason. There was a reason.
Why did we do that?
That's what I'm trying to-
My recollection is that when, when the tract was proposed back in consideration of the final map, there was, it was emergency access only on the Verbena road. However, there were complaints from the residents during the consideration about the additional traffic on Clancy Lane at the signal and the movements there. If you remember, one of the concerns was the southbound Monterey traffic turning in, the concern about people approaching fast and softening that turn was one of the items. The other was exiting Clancy Lane. The site distance was an issue, that was one of the issues. So a number of issues brought up. Also additional traffic on the Clancy Lane from the 32 homes, all coming that direction. So my recollection is that the council in an effort to reduce that amount of traffic, also-
Reduce the amount of traffic going which way, Bill?
Onto Clancy. Because that was the only way, was onto Clancy and then out onto Monterey. To send some of the traffic, at least a portion of the track going northward would exit onto Verbena, realizing that's a local street with no signals anywhere, that it would be exit-only onto Verbena, and this would take a portion of the traffic while most of it would continue to go down onto, onto Clancy and then to Monterey. So again, it was the tract conditions for the final map are exit-only, and also they were conditioned to improve the street, improve Verbena from their eastern boundary the whole way over to Monterey was also an added condition. So one of the things to, to be concerned with, if Verbena was changed to entrance also, then we have to deal with, one of the issues was, to do that, you need an entrance with stacking distance because there'd be someone punching a pad perhaps at that entrance. So it would have to be wider, there'd have to be a turnaround provided for cars that either the residents weren't home or for some reason they couldn't get in, someone was behind them, they'd have to turn around. So it would require a lot more right-of-way. For example, look at the proposed entrance as compared to that exit-only. The entrance is very wide, the exit-only is very narrow. And so it's much more additional right-of-way, they'd probably lose, could lose a lot or two at the, right there at the exit. So there are issues like that to consider also.
Do you essentially figure it's impractical or could create problems?
Well, frankly, I don't think it's needed for that few, for 32 lots, it's just not going to be a lot of traffic. Because you provide the exit-only, a fair number of the people living in the northern half of the track will exit out there, and I just don't think it's needed, and there will be impacts.
People going to Bob Hope will exit that way, I would imagine, as compared to making a right turn on Monterey and going down, I don't know how far, before you can cut over to Lot 11 and then back up.
Yeah, cars going to Bob Hope, that's, that's a good question because even going out on the Clancy's not all that great either. It's a long stretch, it's 25 miles an hour, and so that's not real attractive either. The other way, going up to Verbena and then snaking through the neighborhood.
Well, people wanting to go to the river who are living, would be living in the new area, they would have it, they'd have it pretty tough. I mean, if they can't go, if they can't go down Clancy Lane to get to the river, they've got a real hike either way.
They can access Verbena over though, from Verbena.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably a little bit faster than going the other way.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Bill. Just wanted to, if you have any further information you'd like to give us. I do have a question regarding the one additional Mediterranean design now.
Yes.
You have 32 homes at full development. How many of the Mediterranean style will you allow of those 32?
Well, the plan is that we are going to be building this in phases. Right now, our first phase will be two models plus, I believe, five additional homes. Of those five homes, we've already pre-plotted two of them as Mediterranean. How the rest of the community bears out is going to depend in large part on our homeowners because we are going to allow them to pick certain styles and structural options and elevations, and also the city's requirements that you don't want similar elevations next to each other.
So would you say maybe a third of the total?
Yeah, probably.
Maybe 10 or 11 of the-
I would guess that that's probably going to be the case. Yeah. I think that the Mediterranean style is very, very traditional. The contemporary styles are much more popular today, but Mediterranean is always popular as well, so.
We appreciate your opportunity, or the opportunities you've given the new buyers to have a greater choice and certainly something that fits in with Clancy Lane.
Well, thank you. And, and again, I think it's going to be a nice improvement to the community doing it.
You have anything further you'd like to say before we close the public hearing?
No. I think, do want to thank the city staff. They've been a real pleasure to work with. We've been building in this valley for, since 1987, and I think we've worked with every municipality, and I must say and compliment your staff as being just really, really great to work with. It's been, it can be difficult when you work with a city that doesn't know what they want, and the ambiguity can really cause a lot of delays and a lot of frustration, and that hasn't been the case here, other than maybe with this gate. No, that hasn't been the case here. Josh and the entire staff has, have been great to work with, so I want to thank them. And I do want to make sure that, that the two conditions that I brought up don't get lost, and that would be to allow us to have some turf and to not require us to put a sidewalk on property that we don't own.
Okay.
Mayor?
Vince?
Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ted.
Regarding the, the question on Lot 30 and the restoration of the catch basin?
Yes, I'm, you want me to address it or?
Yeah, if you would, tell us what your thought is on that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not aware that we had a bulldozer that ran over the, the retention basin. I'm certainly not claiming that, that she is a liar, but I am not aware of it. But I can assure you that if we did anything to disrupt their basin, we will definitely be responsible for putting it back exactly as it's supposed to be. And I do think that she was a little bit confused. It's, our block wall will be on the border of the properties. It's the buildings that are 25-foot setback. I think she was thinking the block wall was 25, setback 25 feet from the retention basin, and that's not the case. But we definitely will be responsible for returning that basin to its required state once we're done with our grading.
Thank you.
And I apologize to her for any inconvenience that it might have caused.
Mayor, that was my question as well.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Vince.
I just had one quick question. Are all these homes going to be built to custom, or are you going to reach a point after you do the seven and sell them? Aside from the two model homes, are you going to be building and then hoping to sell as you build them?
Well, the, the first, the first five homes, as I said, we're spec-ing ourselves based on all of our knowledge and what we think people are going to want. And then from that point on, they will be customed to the, to the home buyers' desires. But we are going to be releasing the lots in phases, so we will, we're not going to let people come in and pick any lot they want and then build on that, you know, build spot throughout the community. We will build in a very systematic way to keep the construction traffic nice and everybody's living experience comfortable. So I don't know if that answers your question, but-
Well, my question was pretty much, are you going to build just as they are purchased and, and designed by the new owners, or are you going to build and hold until a buyer comes along?
The, the hope is that the market is such that once we, and I'm not trying to avoid the question, I'm trying to answer it the best I can. Once we have the first phase going, we feel that that will be sufficient to grab the attention and interest of the community and buyers, and so that we will be able to build out the rest of the community in our phases per their choices. So the homes will be, will allow them to pick whether or not they want a casita or the morning room or the wet bars and what have you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Sure. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Josh? We want to address these two issues that were brought up regarding the turf on the property and also the sidewalk.
Regarding the sidewalk, we've talked to staff, we've talked to staff internally. We're in agreeance that the sidewalk connection along Clancy Lane is difficult because you'd have to get permission through CVWD as well as Edison in order to get it to the corner. Once it makes it to the corner, there's no connecting point. There's no sidewalk either north or south along Monterey, so it would be a dead-end sidewalk. Although the improvements would seem nice visually, I don't know if it ends up achieving any goal beyond that point. I don't know if anybody pedestrian-wise walks north and south along Clancy Lane. As far as the turf, we've been getting more, more direction and more comments from our AOB members that the valley overall is going towards a desert palette, zero tolerance, you know, no turf. And turf has always been synonymously one of the highest use. Our codes currently require that CVWD, you meet their water requirements, and their water requirements allows, and it's, it's a set number, it's kind of odd that it is this way, but most landscape architects can get about 23% of the overall area dedicated to turf, and the rest has to be drought tolerant in order to meet their water use. There's not really a trade-off. You could go maybe a little more turf and have nothing there, but it doesn't achieve the look. So it's a position staff right now is, is kind of teetering with because we're feeling the urge, we're feeling the pressure, we're hearing more people talk about it, and I think that's the ultimate goal we're going to get to. This was just one of those few projects we were looking to introduce the idea, kind of maybe get some feedback from council and move forward in the future with that.
Are you okay with going with a 20%, 20% figure?
Code allows, code allows water district, water district's 23%, so 20 would be fine. It's just 3% off.
Is that 20, is that 20% of the front yards as compared to the entire property?
Correct. It's only the front yards we regulate. We don't regulate the rear yards.
Okay. Thank you. Were there any other issues that, Bruce?
Could I add one thing? On the turf, I noticed on Herman Associates Plans, the district also requires a setback from the curb on the turf, just to make sure, because it looked like he showed the turf all the way down to the back of curb, and that's to keep the water off the street. So I'm sure we'll be looking for that. So thank you.
Any other questions before we address this issue? We, we had the two issues that we wanted to change regarding turf and sidewalk.
Okay, that would, that would require striking on number-
It's on page 20 and page 24, I believe.
Yeah, striking, what is it, 20, 35B1, the last three lines. The sidewalk in Clancy Lane for the project shall extend from the East Track Boundary to Monterey.
Right.
The motion to approve this would strike those.
Okay.
And then on 24, would it say up to 20% turf?
Right.
Shall be removed?
You want to move that?
That was a motion.
Sure. I'll move that the city council approve resolution, next, resolution 2013, next in order declaring, whoops, yeah.
Yeah, you, you do need to do that one first.
Yeah, we got to do that too, yeah. Declaring the annexation.
A, we're doing, and C, we're doing.
A and C.
Right.
And declaring the annexation of territory to an existing CFD, authorizing submittal of levy to, levy to, of special taxes to the qualified electors, and I would also move approval of the resolution. Can we do this in one, Steve?
Yes.
Resolution 2013, next in order, declaring the results of the election.
No, we're not doing B. You're going to approve three resolutions in the staff report in connection with the CFD.
CFD, right up. Resolutions, what?
Under 7A, you're approving resolution, number one, two, and three resolutions.
Okay, including, the motion would include then approval of resolution A, section one, two, and three?
Correct. And then C.
And is that resolution C?
That's the approval of the development of 32 single-family homes located at 78, 72850 Clancy Lane. That's preliminary development plan case number PDP 13003.
Subject to the amendments that we've made.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion.
And one other, excuse me. Can they take a vote on the CFD, the three resolutions of the CFD first, and that's in fulfillment of the tentative tract map? And then make a motion on the PDP?
Yes.
Okay.
That's actually cleaner.
Yeah. So you're making a motion on the three resolutions of 7A.
7A?
Correct. Okay.
Second, that motion.
Second, please vote. Motion carries 5-0. And we'll now move on to motion, our item C.
That'll be what? C?
Yeah, that would be C, the preliminary development plan.
The preliminary development plan as amended.
And Councilman Hobart, if I can add, the applicant, so you're amending those two conditions related to the sidewalk and the turf.
Right.
And then also I would suggest that you add a condition under the planning heading that says the applicant shall work with staff on the final design of the Mediterranean elevation that was introduced at today's hearing. Because he showed it at the, at the podium, but it wasn't formally part of the project.
Okay, I would adopt that exact language that Randy just said with respect to the Mediterranean elevation.
Okay. There's a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, please vote.
Okay, that was confusing.
And the motion carries 5-0. And as far as item B, Randy?
Yes.
On item B on that, are we still waiting then for the final?
Yes, item B would be continued to your September 16th meeting, please. So make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue item 7B to the next meeting in September.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second, please vote. Okay, let's have a verbal voice vote.
There we go.
Okay. Motion carries 5-0. And that is the end of the public hearings for today. We'll now move on to the action calendar, which begins with item number nine, fraud protection, reporting and investigation policy. Kim, Malcolm, Valenti?
Is that number eight, Richard?
Eight, did I say nine?
Yes.
I'm sorry, number eight. Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, staff is undertaking a little bit of homework. Members of the council, staff is undertaking a little bit of homework. In June of 2013, you received a presentation by Finance Director Hagerman and Accounting Manager Virginia Ortega on the June 30 of 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as the CAFR. One of their findings, while not a great deficiency, it is a deficiency that we are in our due diligence required to address, and that was the city does not have a policy and procedure that teaches and trains and identifies how fraud, abuse, waste, et cetera, are handled within the city. Thanks to City Attorney Kitania, he has provided us with the framework for that resolution as well as policy. It's simple, straightforward. Once adopted, we will conduct training sessions with staff and keep it updated every couple of years, along with our ethics training, which we're required to conduct every two years. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Following the vote, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, I need to attend a personnel matter, so if I might be excused.
And this recommendation is being made by all auditors now in light of the Bell scandal. So it's just not Rancho Mirage.
Just not, okay.
The only question I, the only question I have on that is on page eight dash three, the second whereas, it says the city council has determined a need to guard against. That suggests that we're aware of something having happened. I'm wondering if we couldn't say it's identif, the city council believes that the best approach is to guard against. Does that work? Or do we have a need that we don't, that we haven't all been informed of?
I believe you just have a general need to have something like this in place, not because there's anything that indicates that we have an issue. I like Councilman Hobart's language.
Okay.
So the city council believes...
No, well, we'll do it, whereas the city council has determined that the best approach is to guard against any misuse or misappropriation of city assets.
I've made the correction.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll come back to the council for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt resolution number 2013, next in line, of the city of Rancho Mirage approving a fraud protection, reporting and investigation policy subject to the text amendment.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Oh, we don't have Mr. Wild, he had to step up, oops.
I guess he abstains, can he abstain? Or he's not here?
Motion carries 4-0 with one abstention. Now move on to item number nine, which is the consideration of the proposed property improvement program for commercial business and properties located within the city of Rancho Mirage. And this is being brought to us by Sean Smith, Economic Development and Housing Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Kite.
Here on, Sean.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, staff is requesting council consideration and approval of a property improvement program for commercial properties within the city of Rancho Mirage. In October of 2009, the Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency Board approved a facade and property improvement program for Highway 111. The program consisted of two levels of assistance. Tier one provided a maximum $5,000 grant for minor improvements and tier two provided a matching grant of, for up to $50,000 plus a $5,000 grant for design fees. The funding mechanism for these projects was redevelopment bond proceeds. Yet due to the loss of funding as a result of the elimination of redevelopment in California, that program ended in 2011. The few projects that were completed through the former facade and property improvement program are presented on this slide. We had assisted with the landscape refurbishment along Highway 111 for the Hilton Garden Inn. That was done under the tier one assistance level of $5,000. The same is true of the next project, which was a $5,000 grant for the refurbishment of the monument sign for sit and sleep, as well as a relocation of a date palm due to a line of sight issue that created in its former location. On a larger scale, the program helped with a rebranding of the former country inn and suites to a new Holiday Inn Express, and we provided $40,000 towards that effort. Amici had underwent a $96,000 improvement program for which the agency provided $48,000. At the time that the program lost its funding, there were several projects in review, including Elephant Car Wash, the Van Diego Velobum Building, Carpet One, car, excuse me, Powers Carpet One and Stone Mountain Flooring, among several others. These are just a few of the properties that staff would like to revisit should the new program be approved. In response to the loss of redevelopment funding in May of this year, the council designated $5 million of the general fund for use towards continued economic development efforts as part of the general fund reserve policy. Additionally, Assembly Bill 1485 authorized successor agencies to tap into unspent redevelopment bond proceeds. $4.5 million of those proceeds has been identified to also fund ongoing efforts. And I'd like to note that these monies would not be available even if the program is approved until January 1st. Over the last couple of months, staff has worked with the Commercial Development Subcommittee consisting of Mayor Kite and Councilmember Hobart to formulate a new property improvement program to be funded with these two sources of money. The unspent bond proceeds would be the primary source of funding, but in areas outside of the former redevelopment area, project areas, excuse me, or for work where the use of such proceeds would trigger prevailing wage requirements on a larger aspect of the overall project, the general fund would be the source of money. I'd like to note that any project proposed to be funded with $25,000 or more of general fund monies would first be vetted by the Commercial Development Subcommittee. In terms of which properties would be eligible to participate in the program, whereas the former program was restricted to Highway 111, the proposed program would incorporate any commercial property within the city limits. The qualifying criteria would be that the assistance provides a significant improvement to the property. This next slide summarizes the proposed assistance that would be provided through the new program. Due to the large number of outdated monument signs that are prevalent throughout our community, especially along Highway 111, the program would allow for up to $10,000 in grant money for replacement or refurbishment of these signs. Through a windshield survey of Highway 111, staff counted over 20 signs that would qualify for this assistance. Property improvements such as landscaping, facade treatments, and energy efficiency efforts would be funded on an 80/20 ratio, with the city providing 80% of the cost and the applicant being responsible for the remaining 20%. The maximum cost is proposed at $100,000. At the discretion of the city manager, applicants that are unable to fund their full 20% share could be eligible for a loan of up to 80% of their 20% project cost. This loan would be payable on an amortized schedule over the next four years at 5% interest. Properties in need of financial assistance in excess of the maximum $100,000 allowed and the program guidelines may be provided with additional funding at the discretion of the city council. These projects would be considered on a case by case basis. Review of participating projects would initially be conducted by Economic Development Staff and then evaluated by a team of staff from various divisions. Projects would then go through the appropriate process for approval, depending on the level and the type of improvements being proposed. And with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached resolution approving and adopting the proposed property improvement program. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sean. You did a great job on this program. There was one item that we talked about in the subcommittee meeting that we had regarding this that I'd like to just go back to you on it because I see it's not in the, in the items here on page nine dash four, where we talk about the $100,000 maximum for property improvements. Didn't we talk about limiting the, the amount to 50,000 for staff to make the approval? And then anything between 50 and 100, it was to go back to the subcommittee for review?
I, if I recall correctly, I believe where we ended up on that discussion was that if the general fund was going to be touched at a $25,000 or more level, then that would come back to the subcommittee for additional review. Now, if you'd like to reintroduce the above $50,000, we can certainly do that. Staff doesn't have an issue with doing that.
Okay, I recall the same, so I recall the same thing. I thought that we, we wanted to have the council at least give some kind of a stamp of approval through the subcommittee if we exceeded a certain amount, and I thought that amount was 50,000.
It was 50.
That staff had the complete authority to make those grants and work out the deals with the, with the businesses, up to 50,000 or up to 499. And from 50,000 or above, staff would bring the matter back to the subcommittee for its approval as a representative of the council. And I think that's a good policy to follow. I mean, to give staff a, an unabridged authority of $100,000 to spend it as they see fit is just asking for difficulties down the line.
Are you suggesting then between 50 and 100 would go?
Come back to this, it'll be referred by staff to the subcommittee for approval of the subcommittee.
Gotcha.
To go forward.
And then over 100 is council.
Right. And over 100 is council.
Over 100,000 goes back to the full council.
Right.
Correct.
For review.
On a case by case basis, because the, the need for assistance may be different at that level for each applicant.
That's a good point.
Okay. Any questions of staff on this, please?
Is this still a matching grant program or is it just a grant program? Maybe I'm missing that in the staff report.
It's not matching grant. It's, it's an 80/20 split, 80 to the city, 20 to the retail.
Cost sharing, essentially.
Partially matching, but a little percentage.
A little matching.
The whole, the whole idea, of course, is to keep Highway 111 looking great and attractive and soliciting business and helping our business enterprises do that solicitation.
Sure. And then also, how are we going to promote this? How, how will we ensure that all of the businesses that qualify know about this program?
Well, I, I think initially at least, we would approach several of the businesses that were already in review at the time that we'd lost the last program. We've got a limited amount of staff that can actually implement this, and I think it's important to roll this out at an appropriate level so that he's not completely overwhelmed with dealing with these. If we can get a couple of projects in the pipeline and work on those and sort of get our process down, we can certainly start picking up more headway in terms of the projects that we can accept applications from. If it turns out that we just aren't able to, to initiate enough conversations with people that are interested in the program, we could broaden that scope. And I think it'd be important to include this in the new Rancho Mirage Insider magazine as well, that goes to every property or not just residents, it goes to our commercial properties too.
Actually, we're going to start rolling it out next week when the first Team Rancho Mirage meeting is, is done. We're going to have two meetings next week, which are basically commercial and, and residential real estate members. So we're going to roll it out. Once people start hearing about this, I mean, this program is so much better than the previous program.
Huge.
$10,000 for a monument, no match. The other property improvements, and then I think the really important aspect of this program is the last part, $100,000 on up. And we're really going to concentrate on Rancho Las Palmas, the river, Monterey Marketplace. So we're really going to try and make some effort, some headway in getting those properties improved. So I think word of mouth will start to pick up once people see what we're able to do.
And that hotel attraction effort that was part of that general fund policy would also be done through this program.
Okay.
It's a great program, and, and I think it shows business that we're really behind them 100%.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sean, thank you so much for all your efforts on this. You always do such a nice job. Maybe for the watching audience, you could just give some ideas as to what we are looking for and how we are going to plan to help some of the businesses, whether it's with signage or landscaping or what we're really looking to help.
Sure. So the, the reason behind the program is that we want to be able to get some of the properties along Highway 111 that have found themselves in a, in an outdated state, physical state of improvement, to invest in their property or with our assistance, of course, at this point, and to make that property, bring it up to a level that we would consider for today's standards to be appropriate. We just have several properties, quite a few up and down 111 in particular, that were built decades ago that haven't gotten a lot of assistance through their ownership. And it could very well be that many of those owners aren't in a position to provide those sort of monies for improvements. And that's where we'd like to step in, offer a hand to help them and bring those properties up to a level that we would appreciate and assume we'd like to see in today's time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and some of the signs that are just the old canned, metal can sign with the plexiglass insert, boy, I, I think this is a great program.
I think just...
You know, one, one other aspect of this program is that the city will pay the architectural fees for these people to do these remodels and, and will pay for the architectural work for the monument signs. Is that correct too?
That's correct.
So, I mean, there's really no cost involved for the business, and we're not only picking up the cost of the program, but we're picking up the cost of the architectural work that needs to be done on it.
Correct. We want these projects and improvements to be professionally designed, whether it be landscaping or actual facade improvements. And I think you'd be surprised at, as Mr. Binder indicated, just the number of monument signs alone along Highway 111 that are outdated.
We can get some of those replaced, it'll really be a big improvement.
Yes.
Okay.
I think what you're asking, the list is facade renovations, upgraded sign structures, landscaping, parking lot improvements, fencing walls, solar systems, and other green improvements, and paint doors, windows, awnings, and exterior lighting.
Right.
I would mention that because somebody asked me about parking lot improvements.
I know, I know.
If they are green improvements, they're included, such as landscaping, is that right?
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion, please, on this item?
I'll make a motion with the, with the adjustment that you've referenced as to subcommittee approval above 499 to, to 100 and above 100, that we go back to the council for the consideration of a proposed property improvement program for commercial businesses and properties located within the city of Rancho Mirage.
Second.
When you say the adjustment, you're talking about the $50,000 adjustment.
Correct.
Now, I'm, just so I'm clear, I'm sorry to interrupt, is the expectation is that would come back to the full council or back to the commercial development subcommittee?
Only above $100,000.
Correct. So the 4999, anything above would come back to the commercial development subcommittee?
Back to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Right. To the subcommittee.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Okay, and the motion carries 5-0. And we are now to the last item of the day, item 10, which is the making of a finding that the previously established Supplemental Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, City of Rancho Mirage Housing Authority loans may be made to the former Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency in fiscal years 2009, 2010, 2010, 2011, were for legitimate redevelopment purpose. We're supposed to understand that, I say.
I'm going to explain it right now.
We got to get legitimate now? What?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is a short staff report, but it's one of the most confusing ones I've ever read.
Yes, I, I do apologize for that. The dissolution process is sometimes very lengthy and you got to jump through hurdles. So that's what this is. This is a hurdle.
We're jumping.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm addressing you today as your role of acting as the successor agency to the former Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency. And really the basis of what you're seeing today is back in 2009, 10, and 1011, the former redevelopment agency was required to make substantial payments to the state of California as a result of a law passed to really help out the state during their budget crisis in 2009. And what that action did, it took a little over $2 billion from local redevelopment agencies. And the result of that was the Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency would owe the state almost 12.6 million in fiscal year 910 and 2.6 million in 1011. And the law allowed redevelopment agencies to borrow the money if necessary to make these payments. So in our case, the Redevelopment Agency Board elected to borrow the funds from the housing authority, essentially the low mod income housing funds. Under the old law, those loans were interest free and had to be repaid within five years of the loan date. So that would have given us approximately a loan repayment period for the first loan of June 30th, 2015, and then the second loan in June 30th, 2016. The dissolution of... The dissolution of the redevelopment agencies subsequently happened, and staff placed the repayment of these loans on the ROP schedules. We actually received two loan payments from the former redevelopment agency that went to the housing authority on ROPS 1 and 2. Subsequently on ROPS number 3, the California Department of Finance disallowed the item, and they were quoting Health and Safety Code Section 34191.4. And really what this code section outlines is loan repayments between the former, former redevelopment agency and the city. And even though in our case, these loans were from the housing authority, Health and Safety Code Section 34171D2 basically defines the housing authority as part of the city, because the city created the housing authority. So essentially, what they said is it's a blended component unit, and therefore, we're going to view the housing authority as if it was the city. Even though the housing authority legally is a separate entity, from a financial perspective, they're viewed as part of the city. So they were following that according to that code section. So where we're at now is we have to follow the provisions outlined in Health and Safety Code Section 34191.4, which basically states that before you can repay a loan from the former redevelopment agency to the city, in our case, the housing authority, the successor agency and Oversight Board must make a finding that the loans were for legitimate redevelopment purposes. And so that's what you're doing today, is these were the CRAF loans according to a state law that was passed in 2009. And now they're viewed as between the city, even though they're with the housing authority. And making this finding will allow these loans to be an enforceable obligation and repaid according to the law and the repayment provisions in the law. And so currently, the outstanding balance of these loans is about $9.7 million. And they will be repaid, basically, all this code section does is it delays the repayment period. It extends it out, so I'm estimating between nine and 10 years out is when these loans will be fully repaid compared to the dates that I mentioned earlier. The good news for the housing authority is they were interest-free loans. Now we will be able to charge the life rate of interest, so they will be getting some interest at least. So basically, the approval of the attached resolution would result in a finding by the successor agency board that the two housing authority CRAF loans are for legitimate redevelopment purposes and would allow this item to be forwarded to the Oversight Board for a similar finding as required by Health and Safety Code. And I'm here for any questions.
So Isaiah, how come the dollar amounts that we owe are less than the original amounts? Have we been making payments?
Well, we received two payments. So on ROPS 1 and 2, we actually received, the housing authority actually received payments from the state. And then on ROPS 3, the state just happened to catch this and stopped it on ROPS 3. So we actually did receive, I think it was about $6 million, somewhere in that tune, on ROPS 1 and 2.
Questions at this end of the dais? I'm sure you guys know this very well. You've met with Isaiah individually. Any questions over here? Can we have a motion?
I'll give it a shot. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2013 SA, next in line, making a finding that the two previously established Supplemental Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, City of Rancho Mirage Housing Authority Loans, made to the former Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency in fiscal years 2009 to 2010, and 2010 to 2011, were for legitimate redevelopment purposes pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34191 dot four.
Second. Please vote. And the motion carries 5-0. And since Steve is in a hurry to get out of here, there's no closed session tonight, so the meeting is adjourned. Don't forget, the next meeting will be on Monday, the 16th, so don't show up in here in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay, meeting's adjourned.